So.
No. That just came, that was something in legislation or? That just came about in the legislative session?
I know nothing about it.
Uh-uh, I didn't hear anything about, you know, notice laws.
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask that you put on your agenda because the German has questions on it and I don't know what I answer.
Okay. Nobody's really asked about it yet, so, of course I got library board next week, so.
I just figured it's easier to get clarification on it in there.
Right.
So that way if others have questions then we can.
Cut and discuss.
Yeah. So did you get a copy of this letter? Because I didn't know about that.
I thought we wasted our hearing in between.
Yeah, but it looks like it's, these guys have to do a hearing, but it's us, right?
Yeah, I would think so. I'll have to get that clarified.
Alright, so I just wanted to go through it.
Right, well, when you read the actual words, it's like.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, actually, yeah. Okay.
Rick, out in the hallway? Got thirty seconds, Rick.
That's right.
Him and Wes were sound enough that Cindy's window.
Yeah, they just started working on it and they said they tried to cut it out and I'm like, well, yeah, that was true.
You have fifteen now.
Oh, yeah, you know, so they're just, but I think they just, everybody all things on it, so they're not like.
Are we ready, Carmen?
Okay, so let me do that instead of, because I need heads up on that, so then let me rewrite the letter and contact them. Because right now, um.
Wes.
I wanna make sure.
Sign the, yes, chief, please, there, I can bring it to you.
I didn't know there were so many questions.
Right, and I just had a couple of questions because I didn't know there was never any notice. So.
Thank you, Wes.
Well. Yeah, I mean, all this was taken from the one they sent out last year that wasn't going to be changes. And that happened a long time ago.
Rick, you're lucky they're delaying me here. You're lucky you're, they're delaying me here.
There's a what?
They're delaying me here. I said it's after nine and I need.
Like I said, tell you what.
Start the meeting.
You did start?
No, I haven't, yeah, I've been waiting for those two to.
Oh, delaying, oh, I didn't know you were here. My show is nine o'clock right now. I went over there. I had to, so important. I'm gonna leave in middle of the meeting.
Right, and that's.
Yeah, so all I did was change the date.
I've been asking questions.
I'm gonna start the meeting here, okay.
But yes, thanks for bringing up my attention because, you know, I had a call today, I was trying to reach Marcia, ambulance and.
Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting the Mercer County Commission to Order. Couple items to add to the agenda. There's a weed board reappointment that we would need. And an update on the social service building.
Sheriff Purchase, I'm gonna call it.
Sheriff what?
Sheriff Purchase.
Okay. Sheriff Purchase. Yep. Any other additions to the agenda?
The, the only thing I was gonna do is I'd just like to bring, just a little update on the letter that Carmen sent out to the.
To all the entities?
Entities, yep.
So auditor letter?
Yep.
Letter to what?
Auditor letter.
Okay.
Anything else? Now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move to approve as amended.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Review of the June seventh minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Jean, seconded by Rick to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Bills.
There's a single.
This is just, what's that for? Okay. Right. Right.
I wanna do a little more.
Okay.
Is that alright, or how do we do it?
Well, when we bring it up, we can talk about it, I mean, nothing moves forward until we approve something.
Right? I was like, oh, that's really interesting.
They didn't put you in anything? These are the prices, um, yeah, these one. That's what the price, six inches, that twenty one foot. That was just for base one.
Oh, okay, okay, now I'm following.
So I wouldn't. They, um, literally, I did one look at, called them.
Still, that stuff actually works.
We do have.
But I just like. I thought it was in the fall that it was due, but maybe it's because I just changed it to.
I am.
No, it is because I. Okay, well, I'm gonna check up. Done, thank you.
I did have. This is a day later.
Carmen?
Yes.
Oh, finish what you're doing.
No, go ahead.
Um, on these hazen star bills. For the law enforcement week, on this one we're billed three hundred dollars, same dates, same codes, but then here we were billed for those two codes.
Right.
Alright.
All the same dates.
Well, the thing is, see, they're only paying for two hundred dollars.
Yep, that's exactly the same thing here except for this one.
Because when they have these ads, they have three or four sponsors at the bottom and they charge, like for me, a hundred dollars to put the emergency management under to support.
Those are down here.
That was, this is for the ambulance, this is EMT week, emergency medical technician, this is ambulance, this is law enforcement. There was an ad in there for law enforcement, just, you know, giving them credit, but at the bottom you'll see the Beulah, I don't know, different sponsors. And that's what they do, they charge. Yeah, so I get charged a hundred dollars, if you look, PD's in there, they'll get charged on their.
Closer, yeah, those are called civic pages where they, they have, the businesses all paid for the, the app, but the difference that, I don't know about the ads, I thought, no, you could be right, but it sounds like it's just that one of them is for, um, ambulance civic page and one is for, uh, law enforcement civic page.
Yes, yep, yep, and, and they call me on that and I, yeah, I, I agree to that for my support and then you'll see my little square down there. Well, you also have the sheriff doing the same thing on, on the different ads. And then you'll notice there's different people at the bottom supporting that one ad. Because I think a whole page is like, really like three hundred fifty dollars or something, so they share the cost. I don't, I don't agree, but okay. Don't want us to hurt, I don't want to say that.
So.
Happy it was in there. Happy it was in there. They looked the exact same as on the one. Right, looks like we were double charged.
They're different invoice numbers, but they say the exact same thing and the charges.
Center reporters or something?
It's an extra reporter fee. I, 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 I mean, it could be right or wrong, I don't know, but looking at it, I'm not sure.
Today is the first day of summer.
Alright.
And guess what?
Get shorter. Longest day, right?
Yeah.
What's the date, the twenty first, yeah? Think it'd be my grandparents' twenty fifth anniversary today.
Which one?
My grandparents' seventy five, if they were still alive. Well, they're, well, they're both dead now, but.
Or would be.
Liza, who sent me?
Our, one of our de, no, she's a deputy.
She's a field dispatcher, but she went through and went to the academy. So that's her going to the academy, she actually graduated, she did awesome.
She graduated like last Friday.
I said, I just said, who's this, I, I don't know who the person is.
Oh, yeah.
So then we'll have to pay for a badge?
Yep, she'll need a badge.
I left a little stamp on the, um, receipt, go ahead and check.
We're good.
Yeah, but it was fifteen, it was a different amount.
Okay.
It was fifteen, I don't know if it's a different day, but I don't know if you do or not. I think the other one was Beulah.
So he's trying to figure out.
That was my assumption.
May not really fool around, somebody found, brought an actual Beulah.
Yeah.
Scare all those kids away. All the ones who get easier to learn.
Needles and bandages.
That was me, sorry.
No, I mean, I like that it's worded, needles and bandages.
You need bandages for the needles.
Can't have one without the other.
No, no, no. Most of them cut themselves shaving because the razors are subpar, so they need Band-Aids.
Can't use your little toilet paper.
No question what it was for.
No question what it was for.
Yeah. I think it's the body armor drinks.
You're like, wait, oh, wait a minute.
I'm like, that's a lot of money on drinks. But then I saw.
You guys are all aware of that.
What's that? Angela, Donna? Yeah, in the newsletter and something else too.
Yeah, maybe a sound newsletter. That Allison sent. Just gonna let that go.
Sure as hell.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Jamie to approve the bills as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All but aye. That motion passes. I think we'll find going a minute and a half early, right? Cindy, what do you have for us?
I don't know how that works. Um, I don't know. Are you guys wanted? Did you want me to tell you what the process is or? And I did have a little speech that I wanted to say, but I don't think it's on the agenda that way, so I don't know if I can. But I, do you guys want me to give you, you know, I sent you all the the century code on what the rules are that you can accept it, change it.
I think it'd be good if you just read it out and then it'd be.
But you want me to read this whole thing?
Well, probably not the whole thing. I mean, you can give us the highlights, the dates, stuff like that.
It just says that, um, you can either adopt it or change it or amend it. Um, the proposal from the planning and zoning and then it has to be published for, I believe, two weeks in there. And then that's where the thirty day comment period starts. Okay, within thirty days after the first publication of the resolution, then anybody else can say that they want to have a special here separate hearing is how it works. It's thirty days after her first publication in the paper.
Okay. And that doesn't happen until we actually approve something?
Right. You'll approve it and then she has to post it in the paper for two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay.
And after the first one, then there's that thirty day comment period.
And the comments need to be in writing to the auditor.
Right, asking for a separate hearing. Yeah, see Jessica spoiled me. I didn't have to know this stuff before. She took care of that.
Okay. Um, since we got a couple people under the agenda here, I think let's move to Eric from IBV.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, please. We can hear you fine, but the recording doesn't.
Yeah, of course. Um, thanks for having me again. Make a few remarks here based on some of the comments that came out of the last meeting, just to try and provide some more information and clarify our position here a little bit. So maybe about five to ten minutes of conversation here. So, uh, good morning. My name is Eric Wodeski. I'm here representing IBV Energy Partners. As you're aware, our firm desired desires to develop a solar farm in Mercer County, which will have been consistently present and transparent at county meetings since October of last year. And then more recently through the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings since the start of this year. We're not here before you today ask for special treatment, grant funding or infrastructure support. We're participating in this process so that a level playing field for solar farms with reasonable regulations is installed in the county. As it transitions into a future fossil fuel and renewable energy might be present similar to like we've seen in Oliver County and Clean County, your neighbors. So we're from the last meeting and the subsequent follow up. You know, there's several topics that I do want to mention here before concluding with a few additional thoughts from our position, much as much of what I'm about to say. Here is underpinned by legal analysis that we commissioned to be prepared by a firm called Crowley Fleck out of Bismarck, who has advised us on a few matters throughout this process. You know, one, I think you guys have seen the memorandum we circulated on procedure as far as they've interpreted it. And then a few others since then, so we can just better understand how energy and policy is developed in North Dakota. So, uh, first point, Representative Novak, in her email to Mercer County officials, I think it was dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, suggested that we have misled you all on the topic of power purchase agreements, also known as PPA with Basin Electric Power Cooperative. You know, going so far as to question our honesty and ethics with no data really about who we are, aside from the, you know, ten minutes of public comment that we made on June seventh. So, you know, first I would just like to, you know, quote Robin, which, you know, is available on the meeting. He said, we are here because Basin Electric ran a request for proposals asking for renewable energy to be located or to be cited in North Dakota and South Dakota. So, you know, we shared that. That was in twenty nineteen, the RFP that came out. Circulated that document and then, you know, there were several others that have been published by Basin since then. So, you know, are they all, you know, specifically to Mercer County or North Dakota? No, you know, they're a big energy provider throughout, you know, kind of the upper Midwest. And and so, you know, they're all over, but it does demonstrate that, you know, they're actively interested in procuring renewable energy generation to complement the fossil fuel generators that it already runs and manages. So, you know, in response to that, we signed land in this county in twenty nineteen. You know, those documents are recorded. Square Butte Solar LLC is the the company that we are developing this project through. Most energy developers are going to use an LLC, you know, whether it's for the transmission line or for the project site itself. So, you know, if you want to look at the land records, you can see when we have signed land and what land we've signed. It's all public record. We then, you know, we signed the land, we submitted a proposal to Basin, included a price, you know, which we could sell them electricity, a viable interconnection position, which we obtained at the Leland Old Substation. And then the site characteristics. Ultimately, we won the right to negotiate that PPA, you know, which we then proceeded to do over the course of latter half of twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. As you know, this was right around the advent of COVID nineteen, which impacted many variables, namely, you know, Basin's energy demands. As a lot of things changed when COVID happened and then the pricing of our system. So, you know, this led to negotiations fizzling out around Q three of twenty twenty. With that said, you know, I have it on my computer, you know, a PPA agreement that we negotiated. But for, you know, the reason I just mentioned, it did fizzle out. So, you know, still even, you know, with, uh, if if the negotiations with Basin never resume, we do have a viable project here in the county as well as the best interest. We have an interconnection position that is favorable, meaning that there's going to be capacity, that there's capacity that we have established the right to use on the transmission network. You know, without network upgrades that typically kill many new generation projects, even ones of our own in other counties across the country. You know, today we've spent two hundred forty-two thousand dollars of development. That's going to include our site control payments that we give to landowners, legal counseling, my time traveling here, and other consultants that we've engaged to just understand how one might do business here in Mercer County. We've spent ninety thousand dollars to put the project into the interconnection queue, so the application fee alone is quite substantial and expensive. And then in addition to that, we've had to bond one point five million dollars to secure our interconnection position. So how it works is there's a, you know, three-phase study process to give what they call a generator interconnect agreement. And at each checkpoint, you have to deposit a certain percentage of the projected cost to interconnect. And so, you know, for us to tie up that amount of money, you know, I would ask, why would we do that? If we, you know, didn't think that a project here was viable and that we had an opportunity to develop a good project that ultimately, you know, is going to be profitable. So local utilities are not the only viable partner for power purchase agreements. You know, I I think like in a perfect world, yes, we would sign a PPA with Basin. But, you know, with that said, you know, there's other commercial industrial firms like Amazon who have data centers, Transcend and Energy, who have a carbon intensive business model. You know, they're all seeking energy from renewable generators and also seeking renewable energy credits to, you know, on paper, you know, appear a bit more carbon neutral. As they, you know, many of these corporations now they have environmental goals that they're trying to achieve. So, you know, so it suggests that solar squatting is going to happen is is what we would probably say poorly, poorly placed. Landowner options are not cheap. On top of that, interconnection studies are serious investment decisions with multimillion dollar checkpoints aimed at weeding out speculative market participants. So, and you can see like even as more generators like ours, you know, we've been in the queue since twenty nineteen. That's a long time ago. You know, over the last, you know, probably two to three years, more and more people want to do these projects because of the Inflation Reduction Act that Biden's administration passed and made it more beneficial, I guess, to to do a solar project. And so more and more people have done that. But as that's happened, the queues to get a project online have really been saturated and bogged down. And you can see now Southwest Power Pool and MISO in this area especially are are working to weed out people who are not serious and who don't have a viable project. And so, again, put that money down. So, you know, we're, I would mention, you know, we're transparent with landowners, informing them that, you know, if they sign an option, it's going to be a lengthy, you know, multi-year process. It's been since twenty nineteen already and here we are still talking about in twenty twenty-three to study the feasibility of the project with the possibility that it may never go beyond the option phase. So, you know, on top of that, you know, we pay their legal fees if they want, so they can negotiate, make an informed decision. We would argue that, you know, it's really not the job of the county to dictate through tax measures, you know, whether they can or cannot sign an option. So, you know, I guess this this will lead into another topic that's been, you know, pushed. Sure, you made a couple of comments along this line, so did Miss Novak. And so I just want to touch on, you know, that, you know, assigned PPA should be in hand. It's been suggested that assigned PPA should be in hand when a company makes an application to Mercer County to cite a project. You know, first off, you know, no generator needs a PPA to deliver power into our energy market in Mercer County. Two energy markets govern interconnection and new projects. There's Southwest Power Pool, which we've submitted our project to, and then the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, MISO. Also, SVP kind of goes west and south and MISO kind of goes east and south as well. You know, so for a company to sell power into one of these energy markets, it's got to go through an extensive study process, sign a generator interconnect agreement, also known as a GIA, pay for the network upgraded, network upgrades identified in the study process. So, you know, what they're going to do is say, hey, this is going to cost fifteen million dollars, five million dollars, a hundred million dollars to interconnect to the transmission network. And so, you know, to go through that process, it takes a lot of time. It's quite expensive. And so, um, you know, to, um, you know, for us to pay for these upgrades, you know, really the most important thing is that we're still able to sell power at a price that's competitive with electricity from coal, gas, nuclear, wind, solar, you know. It has to make financial sense in terms of how much our power is going to cost for, you know, us to do this. And so, you know, it's really the most important thing is you still have to have a product that is going to be purchased on the open market. So, you know, this process with no PPA would just be called selling power on the merchant market, which is something that, you know, is something we've studied and continuously for this project. But, you know, ultimately, our preference is indeed to sign a PPA. PPA offers certainty and offers certainty that financing parties are desire to underwrite the capital investment that, you know, this project would probably be, you know, around two hundred million dollar project. Hopefully less as prices change, but, you know, we've all seen and felt the inflation over the last few years. So, um, so to obtain a PPA generator, you know, must be able to deliver electricity at a competitive price, as I mentioned, interconnect to the grid and obtain citing and environmental permits. Before we sign a PPA, we want to obtain our permits or at the very least have a viable permitting pathway as, you know, the permitting process is going to cost probably two to three million dollars, but it's going to cost even more for us to sign a PPA and put securities down to deliver on our contract obligations to sell the quantity of power, the quantities of power that we contract and then also at the time that we told them we're going to deliver. So it's it's quite expensive to sign a PPA and to sign a PPA, put millions of dollars of securities down and then not be able to get a permit, you know, it's just kind of a bad business decision for, especially a smaller company like ours that that couldn't do something like just pay for the project out of our pocket and sort it out later. So, uh, you know, why do we want permits before signing? It's really, you know, as I alluded to, because we have to put a lot of money down to secure the PPA, which, you know, it is a big business decision that we're trying to balance with, you know, are we going to get permits or not? You know, we really want this all to come together at the same time, but, you know, that's why we're pushing here to try and establish an ordinance that's just giving you a clear pathway to get a permit, even though it's, you know, as we said in the last meeting, still going to be very, very strict and multi-layered at, you know, the county and then at the state level. So, um, you know, I I think we'd also mention, you know, to insist that a company like ours have assigned PPA in place prior to applying for a permit, you know, is it's going to limit competition in the marketplace, in the generation marketplace, you know, which is, you know, a fundamental pillar of capitalism here in America. You know, you want to have competition to keep prices down for consumers. And so, you know, a company like ours, you know, who wants to come in and participate in your generation markets, you know, ultimately, we're going to force other companies who are already here, who want to be here, to be competitive in their pricing and and just have more opportunity for consumers, whether it be in, you know, commercial, industrial, residential, to, you know, obtain power at a price that's competitive, not, you know, an oligarchy or a monopoly, so to say. So, um, a few more comments here. So, you know, you know, beyond that, you know, we, you know, had our attorneys look at this and and I think, you know, there's a need to maybe touch on the legality of requiring a PPA prior to permitting. You know, our analysis finds that requiring a PPA is an attempt to limit, regulate participants in the electric and transmission market systems. The North Dakota Legislature does not brand in counties the ability to regulate utility markets. We believe a PPA requirement would implicate constitutional and or, you know, various preemption challenges. You know, something that, you know, if I lived here, I would not want to be burdened with as a taxpayer. The North, the North Dakota Supreme Court stated that county ordinance must attempt to prohibit any conduct other than that prohibited by the state. So, you know, if if the state hasn't prohibited it, I guess what the Supreme Court reading says is that, you know, the county cannot either. So, um, I would also mention that the North Dakota Public Service Commission, you know, who is ultimately going to govern these projects at the state level, does not require a PPA for an applicant to obtain a citing permit. Representative Novak, you know, she tried to have the North Dakota Legislature pass a law giving the PSC the ability to require the PPA. Her bid was unsuccessful in this past legislative session and that right was not confirmed. So, to now try and bust this issue back down to the county level is bad for the market for reasons I suggested. And, you know, we would also argue perhaps legally irresponsible. As, you know, I know some of the comments that have come up is, you know, we don't want, or, you know, the county shouldn't want to get tied up in legal issues of, you know, the county trying to attempt to regulate the market, you know. And so it's our position, our lawyers, you know, think that this could be an issue. And so I guess I want to make it known. I'll circulate their memo, you know, it's probably better to come from them than us. But, okay. So, you know, Commissioner Wolf, I think you asked, could the county, you know, place a production tax on solar farms entering the county? Our lawyer said, you know, according to our analysis, counties in North Dakota do not appear to have a statutory authority to impose taxes. Counties may simply levy taxes that have been authorized by the North Dakota Legislature through statute. So, could that change if they did get the county's ability, you know, in time? Or, you know, Representative Novak, you know, got a bill passed that would allow the county to do that? Yes, but. Yes, but, you know, until the state legislature confirms this authority under law, property taxes are the revenue stream a county may tap into from these projects, you know, which we would argue is still a significant amount of money relative to agricultural use that we've, that would otherwise be gained from the land if it didn't have a solar farm. So, the last topic, you know, on the topic of requiring a geological survey, in North Dakota, the mineral state is dominant. I think you guys know that, we know that, you know, this, but, you know, this means that the mineral, the mineral ownership carries with it inherent service rights to find and develop minerals, you know, which must do involve the surface estate. So, you know, to the extent that we as a solar developer are going to use the surface to build a project on mineable minerals, we're going to do so at our own risk knowing that the mineral state can come in and say, hey, look, if there's coal here, we have access to that, that's ours, and they, you know, can just clear us out basically. And so, you know, us, you know, going ahead and developing a project on a potentially mineable situation, you know, is a risk that as a company, you know, we're going to take and accept and understand. So, I'd like to conclude by sharing that, you know, I'm from Metro Detroit. My dad worked for Chrysler as part of the United Auto Workers. In my lifetime, you know, I've seen the industry change and dwindle, honestly. And we felt the effects at home, you know, so I can appreciate the sentiment of wanting to keep out renewables here in Mercer County so the coal jobs aren't affected. But, you know, if projects are not introduced into your energy mix here, they're going to go elsewhere. They're going to go, you know, McLean County, you've already seen there, they're going to have a big project. Oliver County is, you know, quite robust with their renewable energy projects as well. And they're still going to disrupt the coal industry, you know, whether it's here or in a neighboring county. And so, you know, I know that IVB Energy Partners, you know, being here in an attempt to be transparent and collaborative, you know, also makes us the face of change that is affecting Mercer County and elsewhere. You know, which is too bad is, you know, we're proposing a relatively small project. It's really not going to displace any existing generation. You know, we know that there's capacity in addition to what's already on the transmission network. You know, we've obtained that queue position to allow us to interconnect. And so, you know, what you're, you know, could see elsewhere is significantly larger projects. And, you know, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about 150 megawatt project. BP has no the size of ABS, and the lead level is quite a bit larger. And so, you know, we are not going to displace, you know, the base load generation that's already here with our relatively small project. So, at the end of the day, you know, I think there's two issues before you. You know, one, should the county regulate participants in the energy markets by requiring a PPA? You know, our position is that would be unwise, you know, for the reasons alluded to earlier. And then two, you know, should the county impose a strict but fair zoning ordinance to manage potential solar projects equitably? Our position is yes, you know, which is why we've worked hard to find a reasonable middle ground with the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, some of you guys were on the Planning and Zoning Commission that unanimously adopted the zoning ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting to the Board of Commissioners. And so, you know, we, yeah, do we think that there might be a couple of flaws in that document? Sure, but, you know, we think it's, it's reasonable, it's strict, we can still work within it, you know, and that's why we're asking the Mercer County Board of Commissioners to, you know, adopt the ordinance and commence the 30-day written response period. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Todd?
The question's on break, I forget your first name, I'm sorry.
Eric.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
And I'm Todd, but it's not Mr. Right. And I apologize for my appearance, but breakfast was a good, I ended up wearing part of it. As you can see, we're not standing on a bunch of unnecessary formalities.
Sure.
But some of the questions I'm asking was brought up to me. First question was thrown a while back ago is, where are you getting your funding? And how much of that's coming from the federal government?
Sure. So, you know, our projects are entirely privately funded. With that, you know, the Inflation Reduction Act has established a 30% investment tax credit. So, you know, if we spend $200 million, we get 30% of that back in tax credit. So, are we receiving a grant funding or a direct subsidy? No, but yes, there is a tax credit available to any renewable energy project in the United States, whether it's on your home, whether it's commercial. On top of that, you know, the Inflation Reduction Act, in addition to trying to encourage the manufacturing of solar system components here in the United States, it, you know, is going to give additional credits if we procure US-produced solar panels and other equipment, racking inverters, et cetera, that go into these systems. And so, you know, we could, in theory, get a larger tax credit if we, you know, use US-made materials. Here, in Mercer County, you guys fall within what's called an energy community where, you know, the federal government, you know, they looked at, you know, okay, where is fossil fuels present? You know, where could they be affected by this? And, and so, you know, if you locate projects here, you know, there's additional tax credits that could be added onto the 30%. And so, you know, I, I know in the past, you know, with some of the projects southwest, there was definitely a misappropriation of funds for, you know, the big solar mirror projects and whatnot as they were trying to encourage solar development out there. And, yes, you know, that was, that's a bad look for the industry, but, you know, it was a long time ago. And it's a little bit different now. You kind of, you have to spend, invest to get the tax credit. You know, there's not a check that's cut and then we go do the project. You know, we are going to have to raise all the capital privately if we don't have it in our own pocket. And then, and really, the, what we need to do that is, is to have a signed power purchase agreement. You know, as people don't want to invest in something that doesn't have a contract to guarantee that the energy is going to be produced. And so, privately funded, there's, there are tax credits that are.
You're telling me, you, you just told us that these investors, if you don't have a purchase agreement, power purchase agreement, they're not lining up the cash, right?
Well, there's, there's, there's a couple, a couple of opportunities or avenues available. You know, one, you get a permit, you get a PPA, people are going to invest in the project, you know. People don't want to sign a PPA because you do have to put down millions of dollars in securities if, you know, there's no avenue for a permit, you know, because, you know, why spend? You know, these things take a year to negotiate. They're, they're very, you know, time consuming and expensive, and to not have a viable permit opportunity is a waste of time and money. And so, you know, yes, that is, a PPA is essential to the project, but nobody wants to sign a PPA if you can't get a permit. It's just poor businesses.
Well.
And with that said, like, you know, you don't, you don't have to have the PPA also that you can, we could literally, you know, if we could finance a $200 million project off of our, from our bank account, we could go and sell the product, the energy into the open market. You know, that's why the energy market systems here have been established in the United States. MISO, Southwest Power Pool is to facilitate competition in the marketplace. And, you know, we could go in and we could look at the prices of energy, we can sell that electricity at that price. And if somebody wants to buy it, they will, and if we're too expensive, they won't, you know. So that's definitely another opportunity that does not require power purchase agreement. But it just means that you have to finance the project out of your own pocket, which, you know, a lot of companies don't want to do that risk. I think it's similar to, you know, would you go and buy a nice home if you didn't have a job to support the mortgage payment on a much larger scale?
So, PPA helps your bottom line, but you don't want that required. How do I connect those two?
So, you know, we, we, as it's, you know, written in the ordinance, you know, the PPA has to be shown within 12 months of getting the permit. You know, that's something that, you know, we know is a bit of a risk to us. But with that said, you know, that's kind of a compromise that we made through the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission of saying, hey, look, if we get a permit, we're going to come within 12 months and show you a signed PPA, which is required before we construct the project. So, you know, there, there is still that protection. It's just, I think, there's a difference in opinion of cart before the horse or horse before the cart.
You indicated that you get better tax credits, more than the 30% you mentioned, if you use American-made products.
Yes, sir.
Who's making it here in the United States? I don't know.
Yeah, so you see, like, Hugh sells is a, a big solar producer. Wish I had some of our engineers here to talk a little bit more about the procurement of these. But, you know, historically, you know, solar panels were originally made in, in Germany and Europe. It got expensive, they moved to Southeast Asia, you know, and now you've seen the United States through the Inflation Reduction Act is, is encouraging these firms that are located abroad through the tax credits that are available to companies like ours to buy American to, to come here. And so, they, you know, what the federal government's trying to do is create a level playing field through tax credits to incentivize the purchase of American-made products. And so, you know, what you've seen is a lot of these companies in Southeast Asia are opening up factories in the United States, in the south. You know, Louisiana, we're, we're, we're active for a few projects. You know, the parish there, which is their version of the county, is, is really pushing us to, hey, look, post in touch with these vendors so that we can help, you know, we're going to embrace the solar here, but we also want them to come and produce these components in our community. And so, you know, that's an opportunity.
So they're not building them right now, this is also something some of the work.
I would say like, a lot of the racking is built in the United States is we have a lot of ability to, to make, you know, basic steel components here, but some of the sophisticated electrical components, you know, historically have been produced overseas in Southeast Asia. And, you know, now with the Inflation Reduction Act, there's incentive for these companies to locate here and build up the, the supply, the local supply. And so, yeah, you know, is there going to be a lag between when the Inflation Reduction Act was passed last year and when those factories are up and running? Yes, but, you know, all, with all things government-related, it just takes some time. And eventually, the market's going to respond because the incentives have been put in place through a pretty robust.
Let's shift gears a little bit here. We're talking about a lot of investors. We have some community, I think some of you commissioners have had the same question. This is going to be something like Grand Forks County dealt with, where all of a sudden it's a Chinese investor, which basically means the Chinese Communist Party, are they going to be investing in this? Are they going to have an ownership?
Uh, no, none of our companies. So, you know, we, uh.
Okay. We agree on that principle, it's not a good idea to do business with the Chinese Communist Party.
I agree with you there, I'm an American, just like you guys.
But right now, right now, you can tell us that. What guarantees can you give this commission and the people who's coming if they were not falling into a trap?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's hard to, to say with really any company that wants to invest, you know, we, I guess you could scrutinize every company and see, you know, exactly where the dollars are coming from. But, you know, our, what we're looking for are US investors in these projects. And, you know, you, I don't know, I guess, you know, that's, it's a fair concern, but, you know, that's not part of what we've been doing.
It's your goal not to, but there's nothing in place to prevent it. Now I'm hearing, am I hearing that correctly?
I, I guess like technically, yes, in theory, that, that could be possible, you know.
The next items deal with things that concern the county. Every commissioner here, almost every resident would like to see more jobs come into the county. Other than the construction of this, what jobs are going to be? If you get this project up and everything's great, what jobs can we expect?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, it's definitely one of the hard parts about renewable energy, you know, is, is that, you know, it just is a low maintenance operation. You know, I, I think with wind towers, you'll probably see a few more permanent jobs, and you'll solar farms. You know, to operate a project like ours, you know, we're probably looking at three to five permanent jobs. But, you know, it will support landscaping jobs, you know, local fence suppliers, local electricians, you know, when we need them. And so, it'll be a bit more of a contract base. And, and I wish I could get up here and say, hey, look, you know, this is going to create 50 permanent jobs, but it's just, you know, not the requirement of renewable energy projects, especially solar farms that are, you know, these things are built to last 30-plus years, and they're pretty simple in terms of high beam in the ground with the motor. The motor might go out and might need to be replaced, but, you know, generally, you know, the day-to-day maintenance on it is keeping the, the weeds and the grass under control and, and keeping, you know, putting the robot on to go down and clean off the panels when they get dusty. And, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, 200-plus jobs during construction, which is going to be probably 12 to 18-month period. But from there, you know, it's only going to be a few permanent jobs for the one project. You know, if there's multiple projects, you know, in the county, we're only proposing the one, but I know there's a couple that have also been proposed elsewhere in the county, or not proposed, but put into the interconnection queue. You know, all together, you know, they're probably going to support a little microeconomy of, I don't know, maybe 20, 25 jobs plus.
Now, thanks for all your presentation and telling us this is going to be great for Mercer County. So, let's enhance your permit jobs here.
Yeah.
We get 10 new jobs here. Why is this good for Mercer County?
Well, I'd say first off, you know, this is through the property taxes and the taxation of these projects, you know, there's going to be a new revenue stream available.
But we can't tax this.
Well, you can, the property taxes will still be substantial, you know, on a $200 million project. You know, that's, I think when we came back, you know, we had done a back of the napkin analysis, where it was going to be probably about, you know, half to a million dollars per year over 35-year period. And so, you know, if the ordinance passes, you know, that's definitely something we want to do is, and we will do, and what we do in other counties is we'll commission an expert to prepare an economic impact statement. And when we make the application to the county, you know, we're going to spell out exactly the economic impacts from taxes to the temporary jobs to the permanent jobs that are available. But, you know, in addition to that, you know, I, 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 I think, you know, really, the, the point we're trying to make is that our projects and other projects, you know, they're going to be built. You know, the Inflation Reduction Act and, and even before that, going back to George W. Bush, you know, there's been incentives to encourage renewable energy in the United States for a long time now. And, you know, if it's not going to be located in Mercer County, it's going to be located elsewhere in surrounding counties or, you know, in the, in the rest of North Dakota and elsewhere in the country. And so, you know, we, you know, the argument I was trying to make earlier was this is going to foster competition in the energy generation marketplace while also, you know, providing some new tax revenue economic development streams to the county, which, you know, we think is, is, is a lot of money as we bottle these projects, but I think that's maybe a matter of.
And one other concern, and I kind of addresses it in your email, I've had many people stop and ask, I think some of the commissioners have too, is at the legislative testimony, your company represented that they had this agreement with Basin Electric. Basin is telling us they didn't.
So, you mean, in our testimony at the last?
Let me finish, please. How are we supposed to look at this and say we're trying to, somebody in your company wasn't trying to mislead the legislature?
Yeah.
And now you come and say, trust us, when this is on testimony in front of the legislature in regard to bills, you know what?
So, we have never been before the state legislature. And I think, you know, here in front of you guys back in October and in front of the planning commission, you know, we've said, and I, I tried to open, but I touched on this, is that, you know, we won the RFP in 2019. We've negotiated, we negotiated that until COVID ultimately, you know, changed the market variables. And so, you know, did we want a PPA with Basin? Is that our preferred option? Yes, sir. But, you know, like I said earlier, it's still an option. We still put our projects into all the RFPs that Basin has requested since then, and it's really just a matter of them selecting us or another solar generator or building their own projects that are going to result in them getting that, that renewable energy generation. And so, I, maybe there's a communication or, or, or issue there perhaps, but, you know, we, all along have said, we responded to an RFP asking for projects here. We have a project that we signed here, a project that we signed in Mercer County, and another one that we signed in Potter County, South Dakota, to give to Basin as, as an opportunity to have renewable energy in their portfolio. Ultimately, you know, we did not sign that contract for reasons I discussed earlier, but, you know, I would say, no, we've not tried to mislead or misrepresent that relationship.
Just letting you know, there's exceptions out there.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it's, you know, Robin is, is on the video. You can, you can watch the video and see exactly what he said, and I tried to quote that to start off, so it's.
The last area was just thrown at me on a phone call on my way into the office this morning. How many kilowatts are going to be generated per acre? That was asked of me. I've been through the brochures and I, if I, if it's there, and I missed. I've been through the brochures, and I, if it's there, and I missed it, I just didn't remember.
The, yes, sir. The, so, uh, we typically think about it in megawatts per acre. Um, and about one megawatt requires five to six acres of land. You know, a lot of that depends on the topography, um, how close together we space the panels. So, you know, for a 150-megawatt project, which would be, uh, I guess 1,000 times 150, if you want to know kilowatts, um, you know, we're looking at using anywhere from 750 to 900 acres of land. You know, approximately 30% of that land is going to be under solar panel. You know, most of it's going to be spacing between rows, um, that will, you know, work with the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Weed Board to, to find a weed-resistant mix. And then also, uh, you know, through the, the ordinance that's been adopted, a maintenance plan that is going to ensure, you know, I, I, the first thing I think I went in with Wes, you know, way back when, was, you know, weeds are like a big issue here for Mercer County. And we are not going to let a company like yours come in and, and just, you know, allow the proliferation of weeds and, uh, noxious weeds that, that we've been trying to fight and keep off. And, you know, a lot of the ordinance that you, you have before you is, is designed and quite thoroughly designed to, you know, ensure that there's satisfactory measures, measures in control, or measures in place to control weeds, effects on neighbors, um, and a lot of other considerations that, uh, you know, a lot of other counties, you know, are a little less concerned about, you know, and we're not here today to say that Mercer County shouldn't be concerned with this or that. You know, we've worked through this process, and we, you know, think that what's before you now is, is workable. It's expensive, but it's, is workable. And, uh, you know, that's why we're, I didn't get up here to, to try and tear up any of what's already been accepted by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, as the commission knows, Cindy's repeated again here today, um, the outcome could be completely different. It could be virtually unchanged to a whole new career.
Yeah.
I'm going to try to get us back on schedule here a little bit. Um, I don't see...
Those are the many ones that I have here.
Okay. I don't see Bill here. Um...
Uh, I don't think, I don't, I'm not sure yet. I don't know if it passed it for so long a case.
Good. Yeah. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Um, let's move on to Wes, uh, since he's here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I'm going to bring this over to Carmen. She can pass them off. See, I have what I have to present in front of you. Mr. Chairman, I'll start with the, uh, my request to appear before the commission on an open meetings violation. I've spent the last two weeks extensively studying the open meetings requirements and essentially the North Dakota Attorney General and along with the legislator, legislature gives, um, political subdivisions in North Dakota a great amount of leeway. But I just, I, I think it's important to go through a little bit of what occurred at the last meeting. Because I, I just, if you don't expect anything, you're not going to get anything. So, Mr. Chairman, at the 1 hour 16 minute into the meeting, the open hearing was closed, and the commission voted to table the solar ordinance discussion pursuant to the process until the state's attorney appeared. Now, you tabled it, but what would have been more appropriate would have been to postpone the discussion. It still would have taken a majority vote to do either one. The commission opted to table it until the state's attorney appeared. When the state's attorney did appear, it would have taken and should take a majority vote to bring back the issue for discussion. That was never done. Essentially, the state's attorney launched into testimony against the current planning and zoning ordinance that was before you. And he spent pretty much the whole time testifying. In fact, at the 2 hour 53 minute, he in fact said, I'm now going to take off my hat, my attorney, state's attorney hat, and put on my citizen's hat. And he continued to testify. Mr. Chairman, you did not, and neither did any of you commissioners reopen the solar ordinance hearing to the public. And yet, you have the state's attorney sitting in here testifying as a public citizen. But you did not open up, reopen the public hearing. Here's the problem. Is this a for me but not for thee issue? The state's attorney spent roughly 10 minutes talking about the process that you had brought back to the table. You, you tabled the solar ordinance specifically to bring back to talk about process. Yet the state's attorney got to sit in here for almost 30 minutes and talk about how he was advocating for McLean County's ordinance versus the ordinance that Mercer County had, the planning and zoning had submitted to you. I would submit to you, Mr. Chairman, that this might be tough, but there isn't a single one of you commissioners sitting here that could pass the FFA parliamentary procedure 101. Come on, you guys, there's three of you sitting in here that have been on commission for four years. I, I realize the state's attorney is sitting in here in a T-shirt and blue jeans. If you don't expect anything, you don't get anything. I might be being kind of tough on you guys, but you know what? You represent the county. The state's attorney represents the county. There needs to be some decorum. So when you're operating under the, the direction of as elected officials, there should be some decorum. And, pretty simple. Robert's Rules of Order are used by political subdivisions in the state. If you make a motion to table, it takes a motion to bring it back. I, in my research in the last two weeks, of course, I mean, it's very obvious the state, the, the attorney general's would say, attorney general's office would say, no, you know, given the, given the loose way that, uh, open meeting records and the, and the law is interpreted, there, there wouldn't be a violation of the open records. It would have been incumbent upon each and every one of us citizens at the last meeting sitting here to stay here because you hadn't noticed that you were going to open back up. But you said, and the motion was, to open to table until the state's attorney was here to talk about process. Less than 10 minutes of his 30 minutes of testimony dealt with the process. The rest of the time, he sat here essentially as a private citizen testifying against the ordinance by planning and zoning. So, so what I'm asking here this morning in this issue is that if you would please start to pay attention. One of you commissioners should have said, point of order, Mr. Chairman, the state's attorney cannot testify as a private citizen because we have closed the public hearing. You closed it. No more testimony. Nobody else sitting in the audience could get up and testify because you had closed the public hearing. Please pay attention to what is occurring in front of you. And with that, I'll, I'll close and, and stand for any questions on this issue that the commission might have.
Well, Wes, you know, I do apologize. It was a miss on my part. You know, after we discussed, um, you called me up, I think it was a couple days later.
Yes, I did.
And you, you were, you know, clear and concise. And, I mean, my apologies, it was, uh, a miss on my part. I'll, um, you know, I'll admit that. Um, but as far as process, we did discuss process, and we haven't adopted anything yet. So, did we hear testifying, you know, against it? Absolutely. Um, mistake on, on our part. But as of this point, we haven't approved anything.
Right.
We, we took some comments, basically, like you said, that, you know, would have been on a private citizen's side. But, um, I get what you're hearing, what you're saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if anybody else has any, any comments, but...
No, I concur with Travis as well. I do understand what you're saying, and should have been called point of order. You're absolutely correct.
Okay. It just, I, I want a level playing field.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think we're not dealing with a level playing field here because you have one individual that is, really has, feels that they have a greater, should have a greater impact on, on your decision than the public in general. And, and so, I, I do appreciate you guys' recognition of this, and I thank you for hearing me out.
Okay. And did you have something on County 20?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to go ahead and read through this. I've done some more research, and, and a couple of things have come up at the last minute.
Carmen, can I get a copy of this one? We're done, please.
Yep.
Okay. Again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Wes Klein, and I'm here this morning to ask why the county bridge is open for use. According to the North Dakota Bridge Inspection Division, the County 20 Bridge has zero capacity listing, yet there is an 18-ton max limit sign posted at the bridge. Uh, there are road closed signs posted at the west and east end of the bridge, yet the bridge is still being used. It is still in use. My question is, do counties have authority over bridge closures? County 20 Bridge has a zero capacity rating according to the North Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Division. Next question is, can an individual, can individual county commissioners open up a bridge for public use with a zero capacity rating? I want to refer you to the, um, March 23, March 12, 23 meeting at the, um, oh, I think it was the 52-minute, 53-minute, um, or three-hour, 42-minute timeframe in the video where Commissioner Baumann made the statement that he had been directed by the county sheriff and by the state's attorney to open up that bridge. So that's why I'm asking question, do individual commissioners or the sheriff's department, the sheriff, or the state's attorney have a statutory, uh, authority to override the North Dakota Bridge Division, Division's closure of a bridge? And that bridge was inspected by a third party. The DOT does not do, no longer does, bridge inspections. It's done by a third outside party. My next question is, does a state liability insurance cover an accident due to a bridge failure, even if it has a zero capacity rating but has been opened up for public use? Is the, uh, is it the individuals who consulted together to open the bridge, or are the county taxpayers liable to a lawsuit? This, this is, uh, this is multi-pronged. I have visited with the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. The first response I got was, well, this is a new one. Um, the county's covered by the Insurance Reserve Fund. If you have opened up a bridge that is closed and has a zero capacity, and somebody has an accident on that bridge, that bridge collapses and somebody dies, I think the taxpayers in the county know, need to know who's going to be held liable. In, um, this was provided January 24th of 2020, which was the North Dakota Department of Transportation LPA Bridge Inspection and Load Rating Agreement. That agreement was signed by Jessica Binder, Shannon Brost, Marvin Schwer as chairman on 1/15/2020. It was approved as the substance by Paul M. Benning. And it appears that in that agreement to close the County 20 Bridge, it was closed on November 1st, 2021. The North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, the individual I visited with, they are going to open an investigation because this is a big deal to Mercer County. How does a county employee drive anywhere if you, if the state's no longer going to provide liability insurance? That's one of the questions I asked. If, if, if a, if a bridge that has a zero capacity, which means three ton or less is zero capacity, and was ordered by this agreement to be closed and is opened back up, does the Insurance Reserve Fund continue to provide liability to the county?
Okay. Just, you've mentioned this several times.
Okay.
That the bridge was open. The bridge is not open. This commission did not vote open.
No, no, you did not. No, 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 no.
The bridge is not open to public use. The bridge is closed.
No, the bridge is not closed.
There are, there are signs there. Other than going down and physically removing the bridge itself, we can't stop Wes Klein from going down and going across that bridge, unless we post our law enforcement down there 24/7. And we're not going to do that. It's, the signs are there, the cones are there. If you drive around the sign and you move the, and move the cones, you have now broken the law. And if our law enforcement catches you doing that, they will cite you. But we don't have the resources to have law enforcement there 24/7. Okay?
In the first, the next statement, you said that, you just said the road, we did not open the road. You also just say, stated that. You also stated that you told the Insurance Reserve, we opened the road. We did not open the road. We removed the Jersey barriers off the bridge. That's all we've done.
Okay.
The road has not been opened.
Mr. Chairman, under what statute in North Dakota did the state's attorney and the sheriff, Mercer County sheriff, order that those Jersey barriers be removed? That closed the bridge.
Under what statute does it say that they have to be there, Wes? What, under what statute does it state that Jersey barriers have to be in place?
And those barriers were always there.
Under, under number two.
We removed them due to liability.
Under, under number two, let me finish. The LPA will provide or perform the following tasks to assist the North Dakota DOT in meeting the requirements listed in the National Bridge, uh, Inspection Standard. To include but not limited to, allow DOT to consult access to the bridge, perform the inspections as deemed necessary. Notify the DOT, North Dakota DOT, if a bridge has been repaired, rehabilitated, replaced, a new bridge construction, constructed or damaged in order to perform the required inspection and/or load rating as necessary. Post the bridge loading ratings within the required timeframe when notified by the DOT. Return alert three code, code three notification, and scour and channel profiles when due. Close bridges when recommended by the N, North Dakota DOT so the traveling public cannot remove or go around the bridge closure. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, this contract, it was a contract signed by, at that time, the state's attorney, Jessica Binder. It was signed by the commission president at that time, Marvin Schwer, and was signed by the current auditor at that time, Shannon Brost. It's, it's still a binding contract.
Wes, do you understand, though, that when that bridge was initially closed on November 1st of 21, those Jersey barricades were not there? There was road closed signs, just like there are now. There's been some added, and some added down the road. Those Jersey barricades were not there until 2022. Do you understand that?
Oh, I, I do understand that. I'm asking, I'm asking, the, the, the Insurance Referr, uh, Insurance Reserve Fund's going to ask, are you following this contract? Because it, it clearly states the bridge has to be closed. It has a zero rating.
And it is closed. The, the...
Okay. I, listen, I, I'm not going to debate you because I was down there. It's clear that any, any public can drive through the road closed signs on the west end, can drive across that bridge, come out on the west side because there is no closure. Okay? Now, I'm not going to debate you, but I can tell you that if there's an accident on that bridge, it has no guardrails, or if that bridge does collapse and causes an accident... that if there's an accident on that bridge, it has no guardrails, or if that bridge does collapse and causes an accident, my question is, who's going to be liable? This is, and furthermore, that county road also receives federal road funds? What does that do to that? All I'm asking is, you guys have a contract that was signed in 2021 by the state's attorney, by the auditor, by the chairman of the commission at that point in time. You can tell me what you've put up and what's there. If you drive down there, anybody can drive across that bridge, and that does not limit your liability. The commission did not vote. Those Jersey barriers were removed on order from the state's attorney and the Mercer County Sheriff to Chairman Baumann. It's in the video. He stated, "They ordered me to remove them." They were removed. When they were put there, nobody could access that bridge.
Who ordered them to be put there?
Right here, it says, "Close the bridge." The contract was signed.
Then they should, it should have been done in 21.
I can't go back retroactively.
Yeah, we're kind of going in a circle here.
So, Mr. Chairman, I am sending a FOIA request to the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. The state's attorney is also going to get one, asking under what state law he requested, Rick Baumann in the video, to have those barriers removed also to the Mercer County Sheriff. Because in order to do it, there must be a state statute that overrides the closure of that bridge and this contract. But you have a contract that was signed by a previous administration here. It's not being fulfilled, and that libels every county taxpayer. If there's an accident on that bridge, somebody's going to pay. That's why I brought it up. I'm not here to debate. I'm just here, I have the pictures. I was down there. People are accessing that bridge. It has a zero capacity. Once again, pay attention to what's happening in the county and what's going on, but I am going to pursue this. You guys may think you have limited your liability and the county's liability. That bridge is open. It has zero capacity. It should be closed for no use. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. All right. Let's take a recess here for a few minutes.
Haven't signed it off. Did they sign the guests? Did they sign the ones too?
We can start without him.
Yeah, what did you say, five minutes?
I just said a few minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because every time I try to stay the time, it never works out.
That's true.
Carmen, are we ready? We're gonna get going again. Are we still live, or did you pause this? Okay, all right. 10:35, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We're stuck on the planning and zoning stuff. I don't know if anybody's interested in doing a motion right now. If not, I'd like to move on to the highway department. Okay, let's bring up Ken and Charlie. We'll talk about roads for, right now.
Good morning.
Morning.
We had the state bids, I think it was on June 9th, Charlie?
Yes.
For County 27, from north of Hazen up to 1806, a little bidder came in. It was Mayo Construction of $2,331,819.24.
Can you say that number again, please? Thank you.
And that came under engineer's bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty substantial. It came under the first. And keep in mind, we're still planning on utilizing DOT federal aid dollars on that project as well as 1505, I'll spell 1505.
Okay.
The 1505 or what? I already explained this to me before, the 1505 money is what then?
That's federal aid, essentially, grant money. But that, that was, that is treated like local funds. That's already been deposited with the county. You guys have that money. That was.
It was like, what you discussed, like the 300s or 350s varying by year or whatever?
No, the DOT federal aid, yep. The DOT federal aid, annual allocations that we receive from the state is approximately 350,000. And that bucket of money accumulates over time until we decide to utilize it for a project. So at this point, I think the next step forward with this logically would be to sit down with you guys and say, okay, how do we want to do this? Do we want to consider utilizing 100% DOT federal aid and then utilize the 1505 monies that we have on something else? Because we have that, that's an option for us here as well. But as long as 51% of the money is used on the project is DOT federal aid, then we don't have any issues with Title VI compliance. We would follow under the state's umbrella.
Did we have to give direction on this project?
Not, yeah, we will, but not to accept the low bid and award it, you know. We've already given that direction to the state so they know what buckets of, or what our repay, or, you know, monies that we plan on using are. It would just be a matter of massaging that.
Okay.
So how far into this project are we on this 27 overlay? Because let's, what if we revisit this and focus on County 20? What can we do? Is there anything that would change here?
As on this project, you're saying, anything changed on this? Well, I mean, if you decided, I mean, if you decided to not award, you could, I guess in theory, walk away from the project, you know, in its entirety with 27 on sand.
Yes.
Yep. But it's been bid out, and that's what, I guess the letter that was received from the state saying, you know, Mayo Construction was a little bidder. The design for it's been done, everything, all of that's been completed. And the bid letting was June 9th. So at this point, it's a matter of accepting or not accepting.
Well, just trying to put it bluntly, up to 2 million, how much of that would be Mercer County taxpayers' obligation?
So the way the DOT federal aid dollars work, it's an 80/20 split. Essentially, 80% DOT federal aid dollars must be used on the project and 20% local match or local share. The 1505 monies that we have available to us are considered local funds. They act as local funds. However, since it's a federal dollar figure that was given to the county, it cannot act as the local match. So what I mean by that is if we have, which I believe we have about 1.2 million roughly in 1505 funds in our account right now, we can't utilize any of that money to pay that 20% cost share of the DOT federal aid that we have that we're gonna use on this project. So for use, we can, we're allowed to use a combination of buckets, which we're planning on doing. The 20% cost share was originally discussed to utilize Prairie Dog monies that we have available to us, which I believe is about 2.3 million. So in theory, I mean, all of the costs associated with the project would be covered by one of those three buckets of money, depending on how we decide how to do it.
But in those options, none of those are Mercer County taxpayer dollars. Prairie Dog is not, 1505 is not, federal aid is not.
The 80% of the federal aid.
The 80% of the federal aid, so.
Okay, so of the 80%, 20% of the 2 million is about half a million. About 400, and that's gonna come out of the Prairie Dog money, which is about
2.3.
Two and a half million. Sadly, about 2 million in our Prairie Dog funds, yeah. That's available to us.
Yeah.
Correct.
Can we use those on County 20?
Absolutely.
And your 1505 money.
And your 1505 money.
Okay, because we need to do some major work. I don't want to get beat up by the taxpayers where I got a superhighway north of town and they got a
Yeah.
mud trail south of town. And we need to, we need to do something fast, and we need to do something drastic to County 20.
And I, since we went and looked at that too, I looked into some stuff. I had some conversations internally on a base one product, not to get sidetracked, I guess I apologize, but on the Mercer 20 side of things. That is an option for us if we wanted to look at that. I need to put together probably some numbers on it for you so you have, you can digest it a little bit. In my opinion, doesn't need to happen everywhere. Probably not, but at some point you could say, well, we could, we could utilize it, say, for example, between Ula Hazen, Base One material or something to that effect. We pick the bad areas of the, with ice sculpture.
Okay, I guess I'm a little, if I keep dwelling on County 20, I'm off subject here, so we're talking about
We're talking about 27, whether we're gonna accept a bid or not, but as far as your question goes on the funding, we have funding available that would not be mill levy tax dollars from residents to do County 27.
So one question too, is like, I mean, we'd rather talk, I don't know how to fix the bid project or whatever, but we have, we have mentioned too about we could borrow forward on this or whatever. To the, it was a project just down the road, but we still have the money.
Right, so the DOT federal aid, the way that works is they say borrow, but you're not, there's no interest for you to tie it associated with these funds at all or anything. What that does is essentially guarantee that you're gonna get that money now, rather than in the future, because some clients that we work with, they actually recommend that they do that, and we kind of talked about that a little bit, simply because of the fact that we don't know, that money could maybe not be there anymore in two years. They stop allocating funds for whatever reason legislation decides, right? So then you say, okay, well, we'd rather get this money now while we know it's there and available to us. And the, I'll call it quote unquote, in the hole of, you know, say we probably had three years while we're at our rate of 350,000 allocation yearly, we would be roughly 1.05 million dollars in the hole until we'd be breaking even again and start, you know, getting money. But it doesn't really change anything other than the fact that those funds will
Aren't there for the next two years because we already used it?
You're right, yep.
There's no benefit to, there really benefit in waiting on this at all, but I mean.
That's a, in my opinion, the way I am going to approach this with you guys is that that's a preference thing. And a lot of our engineers in our company that I've talked about this recommend it because they believe that the money, if they don't know the money's gonna be there, you might as well get it now. But that may not be the preference of every commission or county out there. You know, they may wanna
Well, my only concern was that we have some money for the County 20. I wanna pick at a different subject, but
Sure, yep.
I wanna tie up. Now here, I see here it says milling, thin lift overlays, so there will be, are they gonna mill all the way?
Yes. Yeah, because the slough on the edge of the road is to a point that, in my opinion, was too steep. If we did another overlay, it would have been excessive. And I worry about cars' tires maybe catching the edge and then it would pull them off the road drastically, so we wanted to decrease that and make it less drastic, essentially still be the structural additive of the overlay across the whole roadway surface.
Okay.
So that was the reason for the decision there.
And I know we had this bid and we put it out and whatever, but does that road need all this?
So the reason 27 has been looked at this way, I mean, of course, the asphalt, you know, paved roads are your most expensive assets for a reason. They're just, they're costly. But, you know, the rutting that you experience in the wheel pass, you know, you wanna try to, what we'll do on this project is we'll do a, we'll call it a skim coat or a thin lift where we fill in those voids, and then they'll come in over the top. That's roughly about half an inch or so, and then they'll come in over the top of the two-inch over the top of that. And it's really to preserve the life of the pavement and prevent it from becoming, just simply due to the daily traffic, I guess. You could probably pick on a lot of paved roads and have similar opinions, but that couple have similar opinions, uh, but that coupled with the transverse trapping and some of the marshy areas around there, I, I can say that's, that was my personal opinion on it. So.
It just feels like this road was just done, but probably has been longer than we think it has. You know?
North of eighteen oh six was done a couple of years ago, this is between Hazen and eighteen oh six.
The only stretch that was done was that where Cato had mined through there years ago.
Through that marshy, that marshy area there.
Yeah.
Right. Yep. And, uh, I guess I would, you know.
Then I just, I just asked Rick, cause I, I don't know all our roads by heart, but I guess, uh, so what are five thirteen and twenty one looking like?
Five and thirteen, they were done.
Why, why twenty seven?
Five and thirteen were done with, uh, those, those are federal aid, not federal aid, but grants during the oil boom, they're in good shape, twenty five is, um, like I say, that's why twenty seven has, and twenty one's gonna be the next one north of the Y, you know, turning to go to the plant, but and twenty six past landfill, that's been overlaid within the last six, seven years.
Yeah, twenty six has been just lately.
Yeah, twenty seven north has never been touched other than that stretch there by that.
Just the marsh when it was wet.
There is wheel ruts in there.
Just, just asking.
Way there by Harmony Lake, right, I mean, it, there's wheel ruts in there, and that's what concerns, and Charlie had seen that, but I mean, it's, and coming out of Hazen too. Thirty seven, that was, I bet you that's probably pushing seven or eight, six, yeah. Since two thousand, about thirteen or fourteen, I think.
Was that a chip seal or was that?
No, that was an overlay.
Overlay?
And then we chip sealed it.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah, so as far as paved roads, I think this section is probably one of the last ones that hasn't been touched in the last ten years.
Well, I'll sell twenty seven.
Yeah.
And then that one off the corner going to the, like, campsite one and two off that, before you get to Peak City. And I don't think, uh, Secocque Estates, that stretch has ever been touched since I've been here either. But that's in, that one's in good shape yet.
Okay.
I like to try to do them, you know, you ideally like to get twenty years out of these overlays, but sometimes if the traffic's bad enough on them or something, then your rutting can increase or rear its head, so to speak, and if you, if you're, if you have the means and the ability with grant monies or whatever the case may be, I, I guess I suggest aggressive when you can. That's just good logical use of money, I guess, in my opinion, for your expensive assets. Uh, grant roads are important too, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to say that by any stretch, you know, but I guess that was the thought process we did.
Well, and South Twenty Seven can't be done, do we? Do something with Twenty, do something with that bridge, cause that's the only ways in and out.
Right, and we want to have a.
Yeah, South Twenty Seven's never been touched either, that, you know, and that needs it, it's got rutting too.
I did, I think, well, I'm not trying to get off topic, I think we have a decent plan for Twenty, probably, I just need to put some numbers together for that and then meet with you guys to, to walk through.
And Charles, I don't know if we can add that or put that.
That's had to be on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, can we?
Okay.
Yeah. For a full update of the general.
Okay, well, uh, what would the commission like to do with the, um, the bid for County Twenty Seven?
I'd say we, uh, move ahead.
Accept the bid?
Accept the bid, I make a motion to accept the bid.
Okay, motion by Gene to accept the, uh, bid as prepared by the DOT, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Is, is this the one I'm supposed to sign, or do you have one? I can sign this one.
And say it's supposed to be?
Yes, that resolution, for example, I'll have to submit that to.
I have to, as soon as we're done, I get it signed.
And then a comment?
Yes, yep, yep.
This needs to go with Carmen.
I suppose you can bring it, cause you have thirty days.
Right, and we're at like ten, or eleven, twelve, something like that? We're halfway through? Okay, what do you got next?
County Seven?
County Seven, um, there's, we got a bid from roadway surfaces and they do what they, uh, what's going on there is that they were driven at the west entrance going in the Golden Valley. There's, the pavement itself is in good shape, it's just that there's, the, the cracks going perpendicular to the road are open wide, and I mean, we crack seal it, but they're just so open. And I mean, when you go across and you get boom, boom, I mean, it's, it's loud in the vehicle, I mean, it's, we've had several calls about that over there. But this company out of Fargo, um, they do quite a bit of, uh, airport repair in for, I think in City of Ula too, right? I mean.
They, they just do.
Yeah, right, crack seal. But anyway, they, uh, for that stretch of road, they, they had a bid of twenty five thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. And that's that, that mastic, it's a crack valley.
Or is it a whole mile?
It's not a mile, it's right under, it's probably about three quarters, yeah. And then the plan would be to crack seal it within, probably the next year, the following year, and then we should be good for quite a while.
Yeah, the mastic is something, I, I think it's a good, it's, it's a good test strip approach for it, you know, everything I've looked at too, I think it performs well for real wide cracking, you know, it's transverse cracking, they're wide. So your traditional crack seal doesn't hold up on them, it seems like, and then when you drive over, it's like rumble strips, it's like, they're kind of excessive, I guess.
So we got a bid of twenty five thousand to fix that, is that what you're saying?
Right, twenty five thousand or twenty five, twenty quarter.
We have money in the budget for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it depends on.
Yeah, well.
Right.
How you look at it, no, I, you do, especially the bid we got on Twenty Seven, uh, helped with the budget significantly anyway, but the, 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 the chip seal striking budget of, I believe, seventy five thousand, that could also be used for this too, cause.
I think it's eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, so, there's, I mean, there's budget available for it, yeah.
Okay. What would you guys like to do? Sounds like it's very well needed, like if we don't do this, it's just gonna deteriorate and cost more.
Problem right now is water's getting under, right, to deal with them. A little crack seal that these guys do normally, their roof, their roof apartment, it's, the, the dust mask, it just like runs out the side or something, and then opens up after one freestone, it just doesn't perform. And so we're looking at other methods.
And how soon can they come out?
Well, they had a schedule, but I, I, I'm not for sure, if you could, they had a couple out a month ago, they were able to come out, but they had a project in Fargo. So I don't know for sure, I'd say by this, you know, the end of the summer for sure here.
Okay, just before we start getting freeze and.
Right, no, it'd be before that.
Yeah, it'd have to be done, yeah. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, uh, quote from roadway services for County Seven project? Is there a motion to approve that bid?
I'll make a motion to approve that bid.
Okay, motion by Liza to approve the roadway services bid, is there a second? I'm gonna second that.
I'll second it.
I'll second, Gene will second it. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Hey, what do you got next, Ken?
Vacation extension request, this was from last winter. We had, uh, I don't know if you want to say table or whatever, but they wanted a discussion for, um, the vacation that, uh, for individuals, including myself, that, at the end of the year, because of the snowstorms that we had. Um, people had scheduled vacation, all but one of these individuals, um, and they could not take that before the end of the year, um, cause of the snowstorms. One individual had ten and a half hours, another had eighteen point seven five, one had twenty five, and the other had twenty three hours. So I guess what I'm just asking is if we could have like a six month extension, um, from July thirty first to December thirty first, um, to use that vacation that was unused or could not be taken because of inclement weather.
Do we have, um, anything in our policy manual on how we handle those? No, it's just a request that, like this?
I think we talked about it, we want to have to handle it on an individual basis.
Yeah, but this would be, I guess, the formal request to have the extension based on these ones?
I wanted to do it earlier, but we were told that we had to wait until the policy committee met, and then, so it's just, I know Oliver County had the same situation, I talked to Kyle down there and they were, uh, the commissioners, they had three, and they wanted to go just three months, and then Kyle says, well, he's still got winter yet, you know, so they went six months is what they went, and.
Okay, what's, what's the commission's wishes? I guess at this point, we don't really have a formal process, other than they requesting the extension through the end of the year to use vacation that was scheduled last year that was not available to take.
From a legal standpoint, if we, it says we don't have a policy, use it by this time, we lose it. I think the legal standpoint and from a reasonableness standpoint, because that does get back to the legal link, I, I, I see no reason not to approve it.
But we do have the two forty, right?
Yeah. Well, we also have a circumstance where something beyond the road department, the individual employees or the commission had any control over. And essentially when we get these snowstorms, Ken and the crew need to be out working, it's an emergency status. And what I'm saying is, uh, the labor and wage, hour and wage division would, um, it's about taking a reasonable step. They'd have something pretty nasty to say about it.
I guess my opinion is, like, these guy, individuals worked the hours, we, they worked hard during these storms, but I think it's something to be mindful of for coming years to just watch your hours, use your vacation days, take time to, to do things that aren't necessarily work, so. That's my two cents.
My opinion on that too, is if I could, these are health benefits earned too, and that, not just.
Right.
I got one question though, before we, I got a question for Gwen, is, uh, is there any other ones other than across the, or, I mean, do we have any more in the Sherwood Park or something like that or not?
It's, it's happened in years in the past, yes.
But we don't have any at, at this time though, other than these four?
I'd have to look back, I don't recall.
I just wanna know if we're, so we don't, if we're gonna approve somebody, we don't miss the rest of them or something?
I agree, I think if it's gonna be looked at and we did the inclement weather policy and all that, then maybe we do need to look at the other essential. Just because it was such a.
I guess if we approve this and.
Unfortunately, due to the storm, you know, it was right when people pretended to have Christmas time with their families.
Right.
But unfortunately, we're not able to take that time as they wanted to.
I guess it would be up to them to do the same thing, these, these requests, and we'll look at it at that time, but is there a motion to approve the request?
Oh, moved to approve.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else, Ken?
Just Charlie is.
Oh, I did, I brought in today the, the right of way plat for the Mercer Twenty Bridge. I just wanted to get approval, preapproval from the commission, if possible, for the plat.
Hey, guys in the back, you're kinda covering up Charlie here.
It's, it's anticipated that, uh, um, South property owner Sheila Klonik is gonna be, uh, in her attorney's office on Thursday to sign all the paperwork that's needed. So knowing that and understanding that and assuming that happens, I guess I would just, uh, since we have a meeting today, I thought I'd bring the plat, that final plat that's here, and if, uh, we get, if we get the signed paperwork, then we can have the plat signed and approved and finalized, if that's even allowable, I don't know, I guess I assume we could get preapproval pending, you know, signed right of way paperwork. Which I'm being informed is gonna happen on Thursday, tomorrow.
I think we could approve it contingent on, you know, the owner signing.
Okay.
Just so that it doesn't have to be another.
Right. Okay.
That was my hope and objective with that, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the right of way for, uh, County Twenty, uh, contingent on the landowner agreeing to it?
So moved.
Motion by Gene, second by, I'm gonna give it to Jamie.
Right in here, that's fine, I just wanted.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, so, anything else? Okay. We got, uh, youth bureau updates.
Ken? You can stick around, hopefully we're done before one o'clock. I just wanna have a quick word with you.
They're handing another?
I need to, yep, thank you.
Alrighty, Chairman Commission, I just put it on the agenda because our youth bureau director has taken a job up in Williston and she's done as of, uh, July twenty fifth. So she submitted her resignation earlier this month, uh, my plans are with the position is, uh, she was salaried at about seventy six thousand. I've negotiated with Rachel, that was her assistant at the time for the youth bureau, to come in at seventy thousand starting as August first. So going forward, that's gonna give us a savings a year of six thousand dollars. But, uh, what we're looking at, what we were paying Rachel and where we're starting her at, we're not gonna get a replacement at that. So I kinda, what I'm basically doing is evening the wages out and bringing the starting wage up for the person we're gonna attempt to hire before the school year. I, I plan on leaving that position open because it is our children until we find the right candidate. So there'll probably be more savings than that, but overall, we're gonna come in, uh, with salaries, we're gonna be coming in there under, close to four thousand dollars what we would have been paying for the youth bureau. So, and that, that, uh, that's already budgeted for, you know, this year going through, and so you know where we're going coming in the next year, that's where we're at, and I discussed this with Rick, my portfolio over there also, so. That's where we're at with the youth bureau. And, uh, that's what we're gonna be, we'll be posting in the paper, the job description, you can see is much larger than what we're gonna put in the paper. We're gonna simplify that. But that's what we're looking for, and I will require that position, uh, they will live in the county and they will be part of our community before I'll hire her, I'll leave it open and we'll just burn the midnight oil, and make it work, so.
What was your question, Rick?
Uh, sure, purchase, what ones we got in here?
Oh, yeah, um, Rick had, uh, you have a purchase that he was gonna bring up while you're here?
Also, we discussed, uh, we had, uh, auction, we sold some guns on, uh, uh, Saturday. And we, we did about ninety two seventy five, we have a ten percent, uh, auction fee, so we had about eighty three forty seven or eighty three fifty roughly. We had a two thousand, two hundred and sixty five dollars in pre-sales. Uh, this, we have approximately ten thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. This money earmarked, this goes to general fund, but we'd like to purchase new weapons for the officers, they've been carrying these for up to twenty years. Our cost would be about ten thousand to ten thousand, five hundred. We would be, and then we would turn around and, uh, sell the old weapons, uh, as we expected about two thousand to twenty five hundred dollars again in, uh, sale. We put that back in the general fund, so that, we're looking at a request from the commission that, I guess, I'm gonna put Todd on there, part of that is, um, the legal side of it is with the general fund and how we can make this work and stuff, so.
Yes, and I, I guess just briefly before Todd speaks, has the legality, uh, what we're looking at is, is like, uh, some of our guns are twenty years old. some of our guns are twenty years old, the one on my hip is twenty years old. Not to say they haven't been kept up, they're, they're, they'll serve their purpose. But with over twenty years, you can imagine that ballistics change and weights change. And I've been wearing something that's heavier than I should have on my hip for that long. The new guns we'd be looking at, they want to go down to nine millimeter, so they're lighter. And the ammo would be less expensive. And that price that Rick, Commissioner Bowman, excuse me, set out, that includes holsters and lights, that's, that's the whole work is to replace ten of them. And so we'd be with, with that unexpected or unbudgeted revenue, we, what we're asking for is an unbudgeted expense back. But, and I guess there's legalities because it was a gun auction that we have to go through to do that. That's our reasoning behind it, is some, some of the weapons are, are newer, but the ones we have to replace are near twenty years old. Some of them actually older than twenty. And the ballistics and the weights have changed and it's time for new lights and new holsters and stuff like that too, so.
I'd just like to concur with Sheriff Chernus that it is crucial to exchange weapons. Usually we do with our company, you know, every five years, we have to get new firearms in ours. So it is crucial that we do get some new firearms for our deputies. And it actually does help quite a bit with the nine millimeter because the ammo is quite a bit cheaper too.
Sure.
So it will actually end up helping us in the long run as well.
As far as legalities, when we have these forfeited guns being sold, the auction was conducted in conjunction with the Clean County. Morton also participated.
Morton participated and I believe Yaman Fish?
Yeah, Yaman Fish.
And the reservation also participated. So we, we got in without any of the setup costs or anything, we just jumped on to their auction. Takes a lot of the headache away from me too. Because otherwise too, I'm, you know, typical, I'd be at the back of the auction watching those buying stuff and that shouldn't be either, so. It's legal, it's legal, so.
Doing that, kind of stroke of luck. Clean County does one every two years. They end up getting a lot more because eighty-three is a lot busier. And as a result, they get more, but in this last two-year period, they didn't have a whole lot. And a lot of there is some contact that Terry and I are saying, if I can list more guns, I get more gun buyers. And as far as legality with the transfer and all of that, that's all covered. That's handled by a separate FFL. So that gets us out of that transfer, which is a good, legally and practically. These funds have to go to the general fund, that's spelled out by statute. There's nothing in there prohibiting it if this commission says, alright, this came in to use this to re-equip for anything. It makes a lot of sense because as they stated, and just to give you a little background, the legalities of the officers' training currency requirements. Each year, they have to qualify with a firearm. And it's not a good idea, it doesn't fit with proper training, to just have an officer go out once a year and spray and pray. Proficiency is required under post-board licensing and all the other legalities coming. So these guns, some of them they use over twenty years, they've had a lot of use. There's no problem in selling the duty weapons, earmark that. There's nothing illegal about saying, okay, we got this into the gun auction, we're going to set that aside and use it for this. Now earmarking it, using the term that we've been talking about or using here, is perfectly legal. It's also perfectly legal, all of a sudden we have an emergency and we need to spend that money for something else. That can happen. But on the liability standpoint, it's time to replace these duty weapons. The state standard is five years. I think the HP might be even shorter than that. Not a hundred percent sure, there was some talk about two years ago of moving it to three years. Some of the troopers were squawking. This is a perishable asset that needs to be updated. And it's an important asset, it's the, it's the old ward, last resort in better work.
So the gen, the money's generated by the sale, we're about ten thousand, you're saying?
Roughly ten-six.
That's, that's our, our net?
That would be our net after, after we paid our ten percent.
And the purchase for ten weapons?
Ten weapons at ten-five, that's with lights and holsters, everything we need.
About ten-five?
Yep.
Plus then you expect, you will auction those?
We'll sell the weapons on our hip.
Yeah, sell the ten, so to speak.
So there's going to be a net return to the general, ultimately, a net return to the general fund. I did have all our impounded cars scheduled for auction, but my towing came in too high. Where it was going to cost us money, we can do better than that. I, I expect we can, working with Commissioner Bowman, we can get about three thousand selling all them vehicles back. I put that in the general fund too also. So that was going to happen, but I canceled that. We're not paying that much to take them cars over there to take a loss.
I'm not a, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to, I don't, I'm not a, an accountant or a budgeting expert either, but I do know that the, the, this would have to go under the sheriff's budget as an expense. So you'd be going ten thousand over on, on your budget. How do, and how we move that money to the budget, we can't change the budget. So I guess that would just be an accounting thing that our...
At the end of the year, I believe we could do it.
It's a budget amendment.
It'd be an amendment, so.
It'd be a revenue and an expense, it'd be a revenue and an expense.
Right. I understand it's a wash, but I... It still will show up as a...
It'll, it'll put me over at the end of the year, so you guys, yeah, shouldn't hurt me in the head with a hammer at that time. Remember, you did this, or I'll remind you, so. Or I'll, or I'll, and again, I know, I, I understand it is short notice. And I'll defer to your decision, if not, you could expect to see that same request for next year's budget. I'm just trying to be expedient about it and take care of it now, so.
Rick, are you going to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the, you know, the, take the fun, or, I don't know, I just said, I want to purchase the duty weapons. And I'm not sure legally how we're going to use the funds yet, but I'll just make the motion that we will purchase sheriff new duty weapons.
Okay, motion by Rick to approve new duty weapons for the sheriff's department, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
Just to make sure that we all know that that includes like the lights and the holsters and everything, it's not just the weapon itself.
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll, I'll say aye on myself, that motion is approved. Thanks, Terry. Alright, next up, we got Skokkae Estates Road Improvement Project.
Carmen, Carmen brought this to you because we have the Skokkae Estates looking at wanting to do this special assessment district. We don't have a procedure in place. Now, the special assessment districts, they have a unique, they're a unique entity, similar to a township or an HMO, basically, homeowners agreement. The procedures that, that, excuse me, there's a C's. The procedures that are drafted up here is a rough draft. What Carmen's done is take what Mackenzie County has done, something that I was familiar with, and laid out the procedures, those procedures work well in Mackenzie County. Just to kind of give you maybe the highlights on this, if the commission approves this type of procedure, it doesn't mean automatically that Skokkae Estates is a special assessment district. People in that district need to approve it to be held under it. That's where kind of the hybrid of a homeowners association. And then as far as taxing, it has similar authorities to a township, an organized township. So now this is something that I think we should have in place because we have people wishing for this. What I would propose is, you know, to go through this. There's no such thing as a perfect document. From a legal standpoint, the commission could proceed, put this on, go through the normal ordinance procedures with public notice. And then thumbs up, thumbs down.
So could we could we approach this? Do we have to, oh, I don't even know how to ask the question. But the special is...
Does the county commission have to do this? No.
But what I'm getting at, should those people in that development come to us with their petition of sixty percent or more of the landowners in that area? And then we would start this process, or do we start this process before they even bring us the petition?
We need to put this in place in case that division or some other division would like to use it. Because right now, they don't have an instrument to get it before or
Okay.
and to get it approved.
Okay.
That, okay.
This is something we don't have.
Okay.
Well, isn't this under a century code?
Yeah. This, this is provided, but we have to adopt the procedure to allow them to through the process.
So the whole deal is really we need the procedure?
We need the procedure first before any...
Anybody.
Anybody can do it.
Right. And in checking back with historic, it's been talked about before, but nobody's gotten serious about it. First person, first division that has come forward with solid Kent is Skokkae Estates. But they're sitting out on a limb saying, okay, we can do the center century code, but we have to have a procedure for the county commission to approve it. We're going to have a procedure to defer to an empty gas tank.
So it's, um...
But the procedure is spelled out in the century code.
Right, but we'd have to adopt the procedure, and this would be the same if like a water resource board would create a, a district? Or is that different? Okay.
This, this is your subdivision type thing.
Okay.
That's why it's, it's kind of a hybrid between an HMO and a formal organized township.
Okay. And it would just start and finish here, it wouldn't have to go to P and Z, we could just, okay.
Because these are developments or divisions that are already established. And if new ones come in, they got to go through all the zoning approval. So I will get on my soapbox again on this. We have zoning ordinances, but we have no enforcement mechanism.
So are we going to be able to see the procedures beforehand and then we would vote on it next meeting? Is that the ideal? Oh, that's what that was.
Just to let you know the source on that is
I didn't know what the was.
Just game changes from what Mackenzie, Mackenzie and some other counties. Just Mackenzie was handy and that's one that Carmen, I found was most accessible. And this does, this does go with a number of other counties in the state.
Okay, so procedurally, do we have to set a hearing before we would start the process, or do we?
First, you have to have the procedure in place.
Right.
We have to put the procedure in place and we pass out like any other normal ordinance. Once that's in place, then any of these subdivisions can come in and petition under these procedures, so we have a way to process it.
Okay.
You can, we're Craig's dude, Carmen followed this and then talked to me about it. It's the county we, instead of inventing a wheel, borrowed from.
Okay.
But he does follow the century code.
Yeah.
It's not like we pulled it on our hat.
Yeah, just out of dumb luck.
You should have got the copy of the century code attached to it to read it.
And just out of dumb luck, Carmen picked the one that I had some input on the revisions a number of years ago.
Okay.
This has been tried things and testing these procedures. However, I would advise, read through them. You see something that you think could be better? That can be discussed. Verify that we haven't run afoul of the statute, but this is just the starting.
Okay, was there a question?
Yeah, yes, is there public input into this?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's what we were getting at, as far as the ordinance. We would approve something and then it'd have to be published just like any other ordinance for public input.
But go through the standard procedure.
Do you have another question?
Wes?
I, I believe that a previous county commission, when Representative Twight was chairman, Dwayne Shire, when they were all commissioners, that they approved a, an ordinance for a special assessment district back into that administration.
Okay.
So there, there should be something on record, that there, you already have the, an ordinance for a special assessment district. And I was just talking to, I, I'm not sure if it's in our book, Travis, but...
Okay. I haven't come across it, but...
They've ordered it.
You said, what other commissioners were on at that time, do you remember?
Bill Twight, Dwayne Shire, um, I'm not sure if Eric Murray was on there, I think he was on already at that time. They sat out, I think, on this end and, and it was in the back, but so it's been, it's been quite a while.
Okay.
But I know, and it was, it was over roads and, and, you know, how you fund recreational subdivision districts or divisions and who's going to pay for the roads. And the compromise was, we'll, we'll set out an ordinance for a special assessment district. And, and yes, the district has to vote, I think by sixty percent. And then they would assess the landowners accordingly by how much they own or worth of value to the property. Travis, I think it's all there.
Okay.
Okay.
Then maybe we need to decide it to next agenda.
Yeah, we'll look for it, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Wes.
And find out and then
Thank you.
Now that you guys know what this is about, I encourage you to please read it.
Right. But you need to...
Can you let us know that if it's still?
Absolutely.
That you...
I got some research to do.
Anything that you give us, we'd like to know what it's for.
Now you have to see.
So that we know why we're looking into it.
And that's the thing in here too, everybody that signs out petition, anybody that uses it, we need them to fully understand, you know, the whole process.
But if Mr. Klein is right, we do, then we would have a special assessment district procedure already
Right.
in place, we can always amend it.
And maybe it was just discussed and it never went anywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
So then we don't take any actions today.
No, we'll put it on the next agenda.
The reason this is on the agenda is to get this to your attention.
Yeah.
Explain what it is, answering questions if you've got about the legalities of the process. And then we can move forward with eyes wide open.
Okay.
Alright.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, that's on the next agenda.
If it's, one last thing before we go on. Even if we approved this policy, unless somebody petitions to do that, it's just a policy in place.
Yep.
By doing this, you're not approving, you're just, just putting it as a policy.
No, it's just the procedure for somebody to do that.
If you want, yes.
Yep.
In the meantime, Carmen is going to research, we might have one in place already.
She looked for more.
Couldn't find anything.
But I got, I got a timeframe.
Right, so that's a little bit better.
Find out. That, that raises a question, was it passed and never included in our standing ordinances? If that happens, we need to address that.
Okay. Okay. Alright, I'll back up a little bit. We had on the agenda for a solar order, ordinance motion. Is the commission ready to do anything with that?
Procedurally, where are we on it?
Procedurally, we have it, the draft from the planning and zoning, we did a public hearing on it, but we haven't formally adopted anything, we haven't made any recommended changes. It's just sitting there, nothing moves forward until we approve something. Or go out and say we're not approving anything.
Is this time for discussion, like, I mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I do, I, I do honestly think that we do need to adopt some of McLean counties, looking at the impacts of other sources, generation, electrical generation sources. So, I do think that that should be in there.
Any, any idea, I was gonna say, section or anything?
I was just taking it off to McLean County one, but I don't have, I don't have my full solar one.
I have.
Yeah, it's McLean County, so it's six point five eleven, and it's under the public hearing.
Under the public hearing?
Yep. I have. I have there. That's what I was looking for, do you guys know what the public hearing section is?
Not often.
I thought it would be first. Definition, definition.
The public hearing on ours?
Yes.
It is line six fifty-two.
Oh, jeez, thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
I was way in the beginning. I thought we did it, but maybe we get to make it to it, I'd rather.
It ends at six oh two.
Yeah.
Just copy that you've got.
You said it was six fifty-two? No, no page numbers.
Public hearing.
It's like. Five twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Five twenty-seven is the public hearing section of ours, or five twenty-six. Whatever one.
I just took the copy that you sent us.
The one that I printed off, and what you said does print it all different too, so I don't know.
I don't know why they're printing different.
Do you have yours, Jean?
So, see? This is what I have printed there from last.
I want whatever the public hearing section is.
So, in, you wanna put within the public hearing section that.
How it's worded in McLean counties. A.
Out of it, or?
No.
No.
Well. I think the top half is some more.
Okay, well, what's your question, I actually found one.
Real quick, is it, how about yours, is it also sixteen A?
See, we don't even have, there's not sixteen on that, it's a bunch of letters.
Cause that's, that would be a good one.
And Jean has the one that Cindy, so that is six fifty-four, six fifty-two.
I've never seen this.
That's the one I got.
I've never seen this version, depends. I don't know what I flipped.
Is he? I made sure I needed.
I think this would've been a more recent, because it's more.
That's the one I got in my.
It's more structured.
Yeah, this is the one I got in my email.
And this and what, what you have there.
Oh. This is the one I got in my email.
That's what I got in my email, this is what Cindy printed for us.
Okay.
This is the same as what I've got.
This one now has the, like, you know.
Same thing, yeah.
I suppose the one that Cindy printed, because.
Yeah, that's the one that was sent to us, it's printing differently.
Paperless, you should just find this stuff.
So, we'll do this.
This is a nightmare all the time.
So, I know in my own.
Not that she sent what she printed.
She sent, and I printed it off. Then this came different, though, and when I heard today, I looked at something what she had, I got.
Okay.
Yes, we're gonna go off.
Mister Chairman, where are we in our meeting here?
We're, we're talking about the solar ordinance mo- motion, whether we're gonna make any changes to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Jamie is talking about a proposed change to the public hearing section.
On the P and Z proposed wind ordinance?
Yeah.
Ah, solar ordinance, sorry?
Yes.
Solar ordinance?
Yes.
Now, there was avoidance zone earlier in this.
Right, the avoidance zone is a different section.
But that's what there's. McLean counties is.
It's all.
It's all pumped in.
Yeah, ours are in just different sections, but it's there. I have the McLean county.
All right, yeah, we both have copies.
Do you really?
Yes. Okay. A little bit of, maybe a little bit of both, I don't, because McLean County's public hearing is their avoidance zone, and is all mixed in with their public hearing, where ours is public hearing is separate and avoidance zone is in just a section.
Yeah.
Probably changes, because I don't, I don't find in ours unless somebody can point it out to me that I have missed about the other energy.
No, it's not, I don't think, no, I don't think it's in there.
Okay. The impacts of other economies and impacts of other electrical generation sources, that is in McLean's, but I don't find it in ours, and I feel it should.
It's in there.
One, one of the others, there is an avoidance zone concept in there with the lighting commission.
Yes, the avoidance zone is in there, but it doesn't talk about the impacts to other electrical generation sources, right? Do you find, I mean, if you find it, please tell us, cause there's a lot of different sections.
Oh, here, it says, in, in detail, with supporting documentation, how the proposed SES material adversely impacts mineable lignite deposits. It's under, like.
And that, that is in McLean's, but then they have an additional.
Where, where are you referencing from, Cindy?
I'm at like one ninety-seven about the mineable deposits.
Under the P and Z proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta keep these.
So, they have mineable deposits, but then I feel, maybe it needs to be added to the public hearing through avoidance zone.
No, no.
Yeah.
Just so, I think.
Mister Chairman.
I don't.
Yeah.
When, uh, whether it's, uh, a coal-fired generating company, like Basin, Otter Tail, MDU, including renewable companies, when they go to, uh, SVP or ISOL to get into the queue, part of the process is by, by FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. FERC looks at each one of those issues, the economic impact, the impact to the, to the grid, uh, transmission. Mercer County, a county within a state, cannot supersede or regulate what FERC by federal statute is already regulating. So, by putting this into the Mercer County solar ordinance or wind ordinance, you're in direct conflict of federal law. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has purview over those impacts, and deciding if those impacts are too great or not. If, if they're too great, they will not approve a, an energy company from an interconnection agreement or citing their facility in that state or county. So, by putting McLean County's impact statements into our ordinance is in direct conflict with federal government, because they already do that and have very strict, a very strict code within the RTOs to do that. It, it just works fine, it's already there in the queue by SVP and ISOL. It's, it's, the, the impact statements are already done as part of their process of approving the interconnection order.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Yeah, just so, we're all on the same page, cause I've been back and forth. What you're looking at, Jamie, is you want to include some language from McLean County's six point five point eleven.
Yes.
And what you were reading off is that, I'll, I'll read, but I, I underlined, but I think I caught what you said, that we were all on the same page. Through avoidance zone, county may deny site locations that materially adversely impact those specified interests or conditions. It permits some mineral rights not incur a burden or removing surface structure to perform minerals or exercise, is that what you were referring to?
But I've just, it's like the line above that, the county may create avoidance zones to propose site locations after considering input from organized townships within the project area, the project road plan, impacts of other counties, impacts to other electrical generation sources, residential property use and rates, and impacts to mineable lignite deposits. What I read in ours is it only has the mineable lignite deposits, it doesn't have the other electrical generation sources that McLean counties have.
Right.
I got one question to Wes, is that, how, how can it be illegal over here and legal in, in that one then? I mean, that one had. What, what's the difference?
Mister Chairman. It's, it's not illegal, but, but I, I can explain to you exactly what the political narrative is, because I've heard it from multiple, uh, legislators in this market. What we pass is legal until it's challenged in court, and a court then, through their adjudication, determines that it's not legal. But, the analysis that I have seen, in my research, and in the research I have done on FERC, is that you cannot zone out an entity if the federal government has already approved it, okay? Once a renewable company or a coal-fired generating station has gone through the queue and FERC's process of approval, for a county to say, no, we're not gonna approve it, based on what we determine as negative counts, it's unconstitutional. And that's exactly what the legislature, this past session, with the two bills that were represented and on the. Presented and sponsored. Judith Norchek was the Public Service Commissioner that testified at both of those hearings. And the legislative, uh, legal counsel also clearly stated that these are handled by FERC through the queue process, and that it's unconstitutional for the legislature to attempt to override federal law. So, the thirteen hundred bill was amended to just, on the, on the PPA, was just, was amended by, in committee, to just ask that a energy facility company notify the Public Service Commission before they begin operation as to who is gonna buy the power, is a recommendation. The other fifteen hundred bill went to where legislative bills go to die, which is, they turned it, the, the legislature turned it into a study, and two weeks ago, the Legislative Management, uh, Interim Committee voted on which bills they were going to study, and that bill is not likely to be studied during the interim. So, you know, that's where bills that the legislature couldn't fail, that's where they send bills to die. And that fifteen hundred bill that I don't know that's sponsored, essentially went there to die. Because every single stakeholder in North Dakota utility testified at the meeting, and they all testified, but can't have to, a look at economic grid impact, and also, um, because FERC already does it, and you can't, whether it's the state, the state legislature, or a local political subdivision, cannot override federal law.
Can you tell me what FERC stands for again, please? Can you again tell me what FERC stands for?
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Thank you.
But Mister Chairman, just one other note, in, uh, in twenty, I believe it was twenty twenty-one, in the twenty twenty-two, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission put out an RFP to gather input, and what occurred is, why the queues are, are becoming so saturated and it's taking so long to do the study, is that they require a transmission study, and the owner of that generation is now responsible for the buildup. Where before, if you got an energy plant with a local utility, the local utility was responsible to do the transmission buildup. That cost fell on the local, local utility. Now, it falls on the entity that wants to do the generation, whether it's a solar company or a wind company. So, it really changed, and it actually really helped companies like MDU, Otter Tail, Basin Electric, because they weren't stuck with the, with buildup, which helps each and every one of us that are local consumers, because we don't get stuck with that cost. So, those, you know, that, those are some of the impacts that, that FERC wrote into the rules and federal law that help each of us consumers, which is why it's already there. And, and Mister Chairman, I, just, just to, if I can add, what you're asking for, uh, it is a poison pill. There is no risk to our coal-fired generation in North Dakota. Basin Electric controls seventy-five hundred megawatts. They own fifty-two hundred megawatts, forty-nine percent of that is their coal fleet. Basin Electric markets the rest, because in order to survive, in order to keep me as a Basin employee, they have to diversify their portfolio. Every single utility, Otter Tail Power, MDU, they have to diversify, or they're gonna go away. They have to. And how do you diversify? You create your, you diversify your portfolio, gas, solar, wind, so that your coal fleet can continue to put that generation online. This is coming back to ESG, that environmental, social, governance score. And I think every single company, the company that's based in Basin Electric, MDU, Otter Tail, you guys are being blackmailed. They're being blackmailed into doing something that we in North Dakota really have the worldwide tail, because our power was cheap. Basin Electric provided it, it was coal-fired, it was easily priced. Now, they have to walk and buy solar, they've got to buy wind in order to maintain their viability. So, it is important to have, to have an, an ordinance that is gonna allow for reasonable buildup, it's gonna protect, to a certain extent, neighboring landowners, it's gonna protect the existing landowner, and yet, it's gonna allow companies like Basin, uh, MDU, Otter Tail, to take advantage of these renewable resources so they can continue to exist. Our power's not gonna be cheaper, but companies like Basin, they're doing the best for their employees for myself, because they're diversifying their portfolio, so they can continue to exist. And so, I would encourage you to accept our ordinance, and if there is something in there that's egregious, Mister Chairman, in visiting with the Public Service Commission, if a company goes down and says, you know what, you guys, this is really egregious, and they go through the process, the Public Service Commission can say, yeah, that ordinance is egregious, we're gonna eliminate it. So, there's fail states all the way along the way. This ordinance was created by, by essentially, we're non-attorneys, we wanted to do, take the public input the best we can do. And I, I think we really did, because nobody, everybody left their bias at the door and said, what do we need to do to ensure that every citizen in the county, whether you're a landowner or a consumer electricity, is gonna benefit from what's gonna happen, or potentially happen? And we left our bias at the door. I work for a power company as an operator, I wanna continue, I wanna see. I want to continue, I want to see other people. In order for that to happen, these companies have got to be able to purchase renewable energy in order to maintain their ESG score, and be able to access funds, financial funds from Wall Street. Basin, you know, Basin's a huge company, but they've got to have money day-to-day, and it takes investment in order to do that. And part of that ability to access investment funds is to be able to show what you with our ESG score to do today. The only way to do that is to diversify your portfolio. So they have to buy renewable energy. It's not an either-or. So these companies, I mean, we want coal, we want to continue mining. Basin's coal fleet's not going to go away. With a solar company coming in, these companies are going to buy that power, because they can say to them, best confirmed, that you're trying to access that money from the Wall Street, this is what we're doing. To go to gasification, sequestration, carbon, go to gas and go to Wall Street and say, this is how many tons of CO2 we're taking out and sequestering. We are needing that ESG score. That's what it's about. It's really important. It's really important that you guys understand, these companies have to buy the power, they have to access that renewable in order to survive.
Okay. Thanks Wes. So I guess, my opinion on this is, it's been in planning zoning for several months, they've had public hearings, we've taken comment. It's here at the commission. I'd like to go through the process, get any actual written comment, address it at a public hearing, and then make decisions. And I think when we do that public hearing, I think it's a special meeting, and this is the only topic we have on it. Because here we are, we've wasted almost two hours today trying to make a decision on whether to approve what's already been presented to us. So if, if the commission wants to wait another meeting, that's fine with me. But my recommendation is that we approve what we have in front of us, we send it out for public comment, we go through the process. If we have a completely different rerate in 30 days because of public comment, we have a completely different rerate. But kind of similar to how the wind was, it just kept on getting pushed and pushed and pushed, and I don't want to see that happen. I'd like us to do our due diligence, send it out there, wait for a couple of public comment, and then have a specific meeting just to address it and move on. So, I mean, that's my recommendation.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I would like this looked into then, if I don't get, I don't understand it can be one place and not the other, if it's a federal law, so.
Maybe it's the legal clarification.
Yes.
Well, the-
If the board says, this is going off the public comment, so the end can be completely different. So in that public comment period, this board can change this, whatever information the board gets, to bring it into line. That's what, you are the final check and balance.
And I'll make a motion to accept this from that P and Z did, so we can get this moving forward.
Okay, motion by Jean to accept the ordinance as presented from planning and zoning, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
The biggest reason is I want to get this moving, and I think we need to move forward on this. We'll get some answers on a few things, like you said, there can be adjustments, there can be changes. Please make sure you do yours into writing to our auditors, so that we can be aware of it, and it's not coming up at the last minute. And I think we need to move forward on this.
Okay, any other discussion?
One last thing. We have a minimum period of time that we have to have public notice. We don't have a maximum time. When you're dealing with something, this thing, this monumental, if you need to go longer to make sure everybody's heard, there's nothing illegal about that.
Well, that's my, I just want to get it in motion, like, just like you said, I'm not saying I'm in favor of everything that's in here. But we need to get a framework started and work from there.
Okay, any other discussion?
Charlie should have brought donuts.
Oh. Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, we'll start the process.
Okay, I, I don't, my printer's not working. I've been scrambling all day going back and forth, I was trying to change the dates for you to sign on paper, and my printer's not working. So either you can change, do you have the original one, Carmen? That they were supposed to sign at the last meeting?
Yeah, I'm sure I do.
Oh, you don't have it in there? But I can go forward it, I can go, I can go forward it to Glenn, or you can change the dates on that one. Do you want me to forward it?
Forward it to Glenn and then, yep.
Change the dates, so you're going to wait a second?
Yep.
So you guys all got to wait, because all of you have to-
Well, we have still other business. So you have time. Okay. All right. Other business, Dewey's liquor license permit?
For the Wildlife Classic Event, July 28th through 29th.
Correct.
Yep.
Do you know anything about Dewey's coming?
Yes.
Did you get a motion?
For the-
For the Wildlife Classic.
For the Wildlife Classic from July 28th through the 29th. That's what they're requesting.
Yeah, so they're just going to put their permit up by a bill of aid during the event.
On sale, beer on sale.
Okay.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jean, second by Jamie to approve liquor license permit. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick? All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, let's go to... Where are we at?
Stake tax.
Stake tax questions, home rule charter. This is just kind of some informational things I've been talking about. I can send people information about it, but essentially, we've talked about various entities, how we generate taxes, things like that. I would recommend everybody look into, it's known as the Red Book for the state. It basically talks about all state and local taxes, it's updated every even year. It, it talks about sales taxes, oil and gas, coal conversion, cigarettes, tobacco, everything. If we think that a certain entity in lieu of property taxes should pay, I'm just going to say like frac sand, not that I have anything against the frac sand, but like, the coal companies, they pay severance tax. If we wanted to, through a process, we'd have to become a home rule charter. County, I'm not aware if we are or not. We are not. So when I looked up sales tax, there's two, four, six, eight counties that have a county sales tax. I'm not, I'm not suggesting a sales tax in the county, but in order for those counties to have a sales tax, they would have to become a home rule charter. Closest ones to us are Morton County, Burley County, and Ward County, all have those. If it's something that we'd like to go down, there is a process to it. I'm still gathering information on that process, but it would have to be done on a ballot, it'd have to be approved by the voters. And then if we were to enact any taxation, we'd have to have that voter approved as well.
You'd have the voter approved. I, I heard about this late yesterday afternoon, so last night, did some digging on it, got a little bit of information from Denell Preskey Association of Counties. I forwarded that to Carmen, I didn't feel comfortable forwarding it to all the board without telling you it's coming in, what it's about. She has a little presentation that she put together and has given at a previous meeting. It's a nice typed-up, written script type thing. And we also got a list, Association of Counties, as of yesterday, only has their list of what counties are home rule and what parts of home rule they select. Because you can go full manager, or basically your county or city is run like a business. It let you go limiting the number of elected officials, there's all kinds of things. But if this is something the county's looking into, I would say the first place we start is I'll send that information, it's very general information. Oh, Carmen has confidence. Never mind. That keeps me from messing something up on the computer.
There you go.
Remember, it's their frac sand, a typewriter. A urine for the old days.
Right, and one other comment I had on it is there was another petition, I think, recently submitted to the state trying to remove property taxes again, so.
They just looked it up on the radio.
Yeah, so.
If you, if you look at that list again, at least I'm at the top, but it's only updated, I think, in December of 2020. Denell told me she didn't have the updated information of what counties in the last election have moved to home rule. And there's a whole bunch of things that you can do, you can do everything, and you can choose, but whatever goes forward has to be approved by the voters.
Correct. So it's, we start the process, but we're not the say on it by any means, so. I just wanted to bring it up, just because with all the ordinances we've been doing and various things like that, the state has certain taxations, we could be afforded certain taxations if we so choose to try to, in lieu of property taxes or whatever.
And for example, you mentioned, you know, their home rule charter, to my knowledge, and Carmen, and Danielle, yesterday, or Denell, I keep this pronouncing her name, I'm sorry. But according to Denell, Burley County has just done it so they can increase what they can tax on. So... And in her presentation, she gives a little history of it.
Okay.
And it's pretty straightforward, blunt history, so.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, so that we start looking into it, if it's something that we'd like to go down. There is a process and it's going to take time, but it is a possible avenue to kind of generate more income for the county, so. Knowing that we got budget stuff coming up. Wade Board appointment?
Ryan Fleming is, wants to be reappointed to the West County Board.
And we did normal advertising for it, or?
According to, when they reappoint, they don't do that, if you want to stay on the board, all their asked for is a motion to reappoint.
Okay. There's no, there's no requirement, yeah, is there a requirement for that, or?
Not a requirement, no.
Okay.
Just that if they want to stay on, they just reappoint.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to reappoint Ryan Fleming to the Wade Board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jean, second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Social Service Building update?
Just letting you know, I got something to look at it Saturday. It's going to get sold. I think it's sold.
Sounds good.
I don't think too much. If you got to run, just go.
Okay, anything else on that, Carmen, or just?
Well, that's it.
Okay. Then we had the auditor letter on there?
Yep, I just thought, and I just briefly got a chance to talk to Carmen about that just before the meeting here, but a couple of the boards that I work with were a little confused on the letter that they got, and-
Which was odd, because it is exactly the same thing that was sent out, but I agree with them, it is confusing. I want to simplify it and resend it out. And honestly, haven't called me, because even Monday, all I had was one message left. And then I talked to one director, so it wasn't like a lot of people are calling me and I missed.
What are they confused, or like, some state don't all have the letter?
There's just a lot of extra wording here, and basically, I think, you know, let me simplify it and I'll send it out again.
Yeah, and I think-
And I'll get it out before Friday.
Right.
Budget stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think one of the biggest ones they were confused about is if they are requesting a levy for over 100,000.
Which most of them are.
Right, that they would have to hold a financial hearing between September 7th.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a final hearing, and they weren't sure like, what that, is that like, our meeting? Or is that like a separate hearing that they need to do, or what, so that it was, what threw them off?
It's like what we do with the hearing at the meeting, their board meeting. They basically have to set a board meeting and then advertise it, so people want to come comment, like we do, on their budget, they have a chance to do that. But they had to have done it last year and the year before. That's why I don't get that, because literally-
I don't remember, I don't remember this ever being-
Okay.
So I think that's-
But does their board, okay, because over 100,000, their board has to finalize that.
Yeah, and the board, we, we do as a board, we do finalize budgets, and we approve and do stuff like that, but I think what threw them off was-
A final hearing?
A final hearing, really threw them off, to be like, do we have to have a separate one, do we have to do this? There, there was just a lot of questions about that.
Literally.
Yeah.
I like the questions.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
And you said you'll be sending up, and then-
Yeah, let me do that, and I want to simplify that, because I want to simplify it first.
And, and just one, one more, it's quite a little thing to Carmen, is they were really concerned about, because usually they had to have their stuff in by July before, so that we would have time to process it, us. And so the August 10th date was kind of throwing them off too, because isn't that what you were doing?
In 22, send out August 10th.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, it's just, most of them are-
Our budget needs to be, well, our budget will be finalized August, well, the final will be August 4th, but-
Right, but if we're telling these-
Our group, and get everything done on 25th.
Right, but we need theirs for our finals, so I think that's what's throwing it off, kind of.
I know in the past, it's been early July, the individual departments, so that they're like-
Yes, departments.
Hearings later July, and commission final action on the-
In August, right.
And maybe that's supposed to say, commission is their final, but-
Dates we could see on last year's, that's the year before. I know. They were in August, those levies were separate from ours.
Okay, done, did you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Very fine. So, when we send out estimated tax statements, there is a date on there for every entity's public hearing, is that what's throwing them off? And that's what they're, yeah, they're requesting. And they're always between us, like after September or before some other date where they have to- Most of them home, like you said, 8th, 9th, 10th of September. So is that what's throwing them off, is those public hearings that they have to, have you guys done that before with your boards? Because every entity sends us in, like the school board, the park districts, the cities, they all have to send in a public hearing date that we put on the bottom of their estimated tax statements. The ambulance, you know what I mean, they all have to have a public hearing date that goes on that.
I think the boards have always coincided it whenever they were going to have a board meeting in that timeframe.
Right, and that makes sense.
Yeah.
Right.
So now they're wondering if they have to have separately, is that?
Right. Yeah, that's where they're confused, and then they're like, well, do we need to invite public to it, you know, or do we need to have it a big deal? Or is it just when we have our board meeting?
But doesn't like the ambulance, they, they have to publish, Liza? I don't know. The ambulance, don't they publish when they're meeting?
Yeah.
And that's what they're doing.
Yeah, and I think that's what kind of, I don't know why, I don't know, it was just because it's new auditor and they, they just read it, I don't know.
The only thing I care about is like working for, there's a lot of people out there, a lot of people. So, yeah, I'll get that done.
I'm the new one.
Yeah, like it's all the same people.
Anything else on that, Liza?
Nope, I was just glad that, you know, we can get some clarification on it for the boards, so that they don't have to stress so much about things that they don't need to be stressing about. Thank you, Carmen, appreciate that.
All right, all we got left is portfolio updates.
No updates.
Okay, Jean's done with this, Rick?
You pretty much heard that, most of mine. From P and Z to sheriff to road, we went through it all.
So you're good?
Yeah, I'm good too.
Okay, P and Z's not- Okay, P and Z's not having a meeting this month, we didn't have anything on the agenda, um, I believe we'll have one next month in July. Um, I have the annual Lewis and Clark, um, joint counties meeting, um, tomorrow in Bismarck. Water Resource Board met last week, um, they approved their budget, right Dan, I believe they, yeah, I was on the phone, so I didn't catch everything, but they should be submitting their budget, um, to you Carmen, if they haven't already. Library Board meets next Monday, we're gonna talk about the, their preliminary budget, and then we'll have a meeting, um, well, we'll have a committee meeting at five, and then we'll have a regular meeting at six in Riverdale, um, to approve their preliminary budget, and that'll be coming your way shortly, Carmen. I think that's all the updates I have, Liza?
Yeah, Airport Board, we, um, with our consultation with the engineer, we talked about our future plans for the airport to include, um, new fuel tanks. Um, because apparently, as like most things, everybody's gonna get an absolute, absolute, and parts to get to fix them are as such. New hangers, and then also a turf, um, cross path. And, um, of course, those are all planned out from all the way till twenty twenty-five, and with federal funding, we got the approval for the, the plan for it, but now we just have to go into places of what we actually want to do and how we actually want to do it, too. Of course, we're done the budget, and we're gonna finalize that at our next meeting, and we had the flying club actually joined us and brought up any of their concerns or anything. So that was nice to have them there, and please, a reminder for everybody, July eighth is the fly-in breakfast out at Hazen Airport. And just something to always remember too, whenever you have littles out there, please make sure you keep an eye on them, because parts on those airplanes are extremely expensive and very hard to get, so if something happens to one of the planes, um, that could really put somebody out of it, when they're just trying to display something for people to actually have a view of what's going on at the airport.
Those souvenirs is what you're saying?
Yes, please do not set your child on the plane and take pictures. Can actually damage the plane quite extensively. Yeah, and ambulance, we're just working on the, the budget as well, gonna hopefully finalize that at our next meeting, we still do not have the ride new ambulance that was supposed to be here probably a year ago. Um, still waiting on that, and, um-
They've been busy.
Yes, they've been busy, and they, um, we did talk about upping wages due to the fact that it's just hard to get anybody to come and work there and to stay here when we have lower wages, so that was one of the things that you'll see in the budget as well. That's all I have.
Okay, Jamie?
Nothing much, kinda same as Liza, um, some wage talk, Candy's doing day-to-day operations, Jim has been out with the passing of his dad last week. Buster's on summer vacation, so, I don't really know if he's on summer vacation, but school's out, so.
Anything else, Jamie?
I don't think.
Rick?
Okay, that's, I just read on the bottom here with this, I did run into Marsh where he sits on West Plains, uh, as a board member, so he's a voting member for us, and, uh, he said he might, probably will stop by and give us an update, and the other one is, uh, I talked to Erin Arada, and I see that she'll be here, I knew they were coming as a budget approval stuff, but she'll be here in the next meeting, so.
Well, and I think, Rick, do I have Custer Health, which is now Western Plains, once Marv is done, but you have Dakota Central Services and West-
Pardon?
Whatever, I think we need to look at our portfolios, because I think I have Custer, which is now Western Plains.
Yeah.
After Marv's term is done, I think, I think we need to just double check that. Just so you're not doing extra, you don't need to.
And I think we just need a reminder, the next meeting is on a different day, right?
Thursday. Yeah. Thursday, right?
Thursday?
Yeah, and I, I will not be here.
July sixth, Thursday, July sixth.
We have that on the bottom of the agenda, so, um, good notice. Any other updates? If not, meetings adjourned, see everybody after the fourth.
Maybe we could talk to someone on Google, because she's on the fire department, so she could join the ref.
Yeah, because I won't be there.
Just because the private department does the- Yes. Right, so maybe that would be my-
Would you mind? Would you mind? Okay, all right, I won't be there either.
I still can't get my printer to work.
And then I ran hers on now, yes.
And I think we said that I could make that one.
Um, I got it, I got it, living program is-
Yes, because I think- Not that she is confused, but Western Human Services and Dakota Central Services are different than Western Plains.
And then she printed it on double line, it's like- No, Western Plains now is Custer.
I think it's with Jean, it's different than Custer, it's not-
Thank you.
Are you mean that's her something, Carmen? He looks like he works together.
Yeah.
Promotion thing. I think we're good, we're good with the work.
Okay, so it just means Jean and Jamie, I'm coming, coming.
I just copied this language from-
Jean and Jamie, you made the motion?
No, I don't. If Chad signed it, we'll all sign it.
I just copied what it is.
Yeah, no, um, this is right, it's different than Western Plains. Yeah, and then I'm gonna double check the details. Two, one, and add. I think it's just called Western Plains. Public health, Western Plains Public Health was formerly Custer Health.
Okay.
Yes.
That's enough.
Yes, right.
And they are different than the Social Services and Human Services. I remember saying, uh, one of the meetings about Custer Health, that I was like, I need to definitely say it.
Marv is only in year twenty-four.
Okay, Jean said he's waiting for the S, do you sign for her, please?
That's why I gave you my pen, I'm sure she gave me my pen back.
Your life, my second mortgage.